Hi, John.
Hello.
The mayor's not here?
I have the mayor who's been here. It's good to see you.
Is this the ice mission or what?
Oh, yeah.
Hello, Nick, over here. Are you behaving yourself? Somebody asked.
Can you still hear us now?
Yes.
Can you? I'm more muted. Okay. We are talking with us on Zoom. I'm just trying to get here tonight. So, how this is a sound between the mayor and everybody else here. Right, Mayor Cook, you want to go ahead and start the meeting?
We'll start the meeting. Setting appointment moving to get there Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six thirty. Council members, call your order. Patrick?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Reslow?
Here.
Dolly?
Here.
Kawa?
Here.
Agenda approval, consent agenda, approval of one ten, two thousand twenty-two, and special meeting of one twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. Approval of financial statements as of one thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Approval of bills that presented, approval of liquor license, followed general home food, hometown foods, coming out. We'll see, ZK Restaurant, Real Country Kitchen.
You got a motion?
I'll move that.
Moved by Mike Calva. Seconded by James.
How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Reslow?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kawa?
Yes.
Okay, number four, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, city budget, maximum tax solid. This time of open public hearing, did you receive from the eyes?
No. No comment from the public. No comments from the public.
Okay, closed public hearing then. Number twenty-two, oh five C.
Need a motion. Moved by Mike Calva.
I'll second.
Second. Second by James.
So how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Reslow?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kawa?
Yes.
Okay, number five, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, city budget, we set the date for public hearing with March fourteenth, is that correct, Ash?
Yes, sir. Need a motion?
Some of them.
Second. Moved by Christina, seconded by Cole, seconded by Mike Calva.
So how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Reslow?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kawa?
Yes.
Okay, six, resolution number twenty-two, post-see, will again setting the date for a public hearing, which would be March fourteenth.
Yes, sir, that's for the, uh, for the next lady, for the benefit of the, uh, since it moves everywhere. Moved by Mike Calva, approve the resolution.
Okay. I'll second.
Seconded by Cole Patrick.
Okay, so how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Reslow?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kawa?
Yes.
Okay, seven, is the first lady there yet?
Uh, not yet, I don't see her.
Doris is here.
Call it, Doris is here.
Doris.
Doris is here.
Oh, there she is, right there.
There she is, she's coming.
Okay, Laurie Cook, your presentation.
Yes.
Cheers. Okay, you can come and talk. We're waiting for you.
We're ready for you, Lori.
Oh, already?
Already.
I'm sorry. The mayor was having technical difficulties, and then I was here once, and I didn't have my papers, so I had to go back home again, so.
That's all right.
See the microphone?
Yeah.
I thought I had more time since I was number seven, you guys are fast.
It wasn't right, true.
Okay, well, um, I'm here as a representative of the, um, depot committee. And, um, we are asking, um, well, um, as a member of the depot committee, um, we have entered into agreement with Brenda Dudley to once again be our manager for the Stewart Depot for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three year. And, um, her salary, she's agreed to have it stay the same, um, two thousand two hundred dollars for the year, which is eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. And, um, we are, uh, we have an account set up just to pay her, um, which is the checking account. Um, through the First Bank, and then other expenditures come out of the savings account. And, um, so we're asking for financial help to pay part of Brenda's salary for this term. And you guys all have a copy of the letter.
I'm sure you're asking for it, Lori.
Um, in the past, um, the, um, council has given us five thousand dollars, um, to help offset that, um, cost of her, um, so as much as she'll give us.
Ash, what did we do last year?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
From the hotel.
Hotel, hotel. Yes. So, once, um, you, um, have set an amount for us, and we'll apply for the rest from hotel to hotel. Is that right, Doris? Yes, okay.
I think Brenda just handed out the list of events they have to run.
That was supposed to be attached to my letter, and I forgot to attach it, so we gotta hold a brand out and see.
So it's fairly active?
It is.
Despite, despite everything going on.
Yes, even despite the COVID, and we hope to, um, continue to do things as a committee to keep it more active. It's a nice building to have, and it's a big part of, um, Stewart, Stewart's history.
I'd, I'd like to make that motion that we do five thousand for, uh, the depot.
Moved by Mike Calva.
Except for budget today.
Yes, yes. I'll second. Seconded by James.
Okay, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Reslow?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kawa?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laurie. Thanks, Doris.
Okay. Eighteen seconds for a committee's agreement, January's appointment, is there somebody representing that committee?
I have Mike Johnson here.
Okay, and then after he, after he talks, I want to make sure Jim Anderson is able to talk there.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Just a few things, I wasn't sure.
That's what I was thinking for. Thank you, sir.
That's why you're having me back.
Same thing.
Yes. Put him to the table.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I've been kind of planning to, uh, speak here, uh, on behalf of the Cemetery Committee tonight. I'm Mike Johnson, I'm with the Cemetery Committee, uh, been in the Cemetery Committee since, I believe, when it was founded back in two thousand eighteen. There was a lot of things that kind of came up for that Cemetery Committee to be formed, uh, to kind of act as a buffer between the citizens and the, and the city's turn to. Uh, there's a lot of activity, a lot of things going on at the time. I would like to just go ahead and start up here at the top and just kind of work down through my notes here. Uh, the Cemetery Committee appointment, uh, back in, I believe that was back in December, we had a cemetery appointment, uh, and I believe that was tabled at the time. Uh, we, we weren't sure if it was the council that was supposed to, to, to move on that, or if it was, uh, Mayor Cook that was supposed to do that. We would like to readdress that item as well. I think it's part of us on the Cemetery Committee, we've, we've had two, three meetings, uh, matter of fact, since our last time up here. And, uh, we have talked with Mick, uh, present, we've talked with Mick, not present, and we're all in favor of Mick being part of the board, he's passionate. Uh, we think he'd be a great fit, and, and, uh, we all agree along on this committee, so we'd like to, our recommendation to the city council is to go ahead and approve Mick's appointment.
And Mike, uh, I believe it was tabled because Mayor Cook wanted to attend one of the meetings.
Yep.
To see how it was, and he did attend one. And did you have any feedback from the mayor, or does the mayor have any feedback now?
Well.
Go, go ahead.
Okay, and as far as, uh, what, what we kind of got, uh, from, uh, Mayor Cook at the end of the meeting was, everybody went great. Everybody gets along, uh, you kind of seen that firsthand, that's what he told us. The other thing was, is he said that he couldn't personally make the appointment after the city council, and it was my understanding, and I'm sure that was everybody's consent, so I knew too, so that's kind of what, that's our first onus.
Would you want to ask him if he has any, if that sounds like?
Yeah, if you're going, you're going.
Well, yes, I made the appointment, but it's up to the council to make the approval.
Okay.
Right. So do you have a recommendation on this, uh, there?
Well, do you have any recommendation on?
Well, yeah, Mick could be on the committee, but a- after Mike talked, I definitely want Jim Anderson to.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about Mick right now, we, we heard you there, we just, just, so you recommend, you, you would recommend Mick being on the committee, is that right?
Yes, then, then the council will have to vote.
Okay. So, based on the mayor's recommendation, I would make a motion that Mick Ash can be allowed to sit on the Cemetery Board, or Cemetery Committee.
Moved by Mike Calva.
How many committee members are there?
There's three of us right now. Uh, there's myself, Albert A, and Mary P is going to make it tonight, uh, so, uh, but I spoke with her a little bit, she's all in favor of this as well. Jim Anderson, when, when he was a big partner, sat on our committee, it was called the board at that point, he kind of went to a committee, but when he sat on there, he sat on there as president, so, you know, that would, that would basically make, one would be going to a president's role where they can't vote unless they're going to tie break, and we do every three of us, so.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, but odd versus even.
Yes, maybe my number at that point, three.
We had a motion by Mike Calva to, interesting.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave.
So, how do you vote, Patrick?
No.
Morgan?
Yes.
Reslow?
No.
Dolly?
Yeah.
Kawa?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And I will tell you guys that, uh, we have the best interest in our cemetery, you know, we're all on there because we have members in that cemetery. My wife's out there, I know some of you aren't, you don't work here on the council at that time, but I love that thing, you can just leave at all times, so I'm out there every day, uh, we have a good group, and we are excited to continue on that group, so.
I hope it continues good on that path, Mike, because right now it's a little rocky.
Well, I, I just want to chime in because it's, it's not rocky because of the citizens sitting on there, okay? This is, this is, this is what makes it contentious, is that there's been people saying, oh, it's so rocky, and it really isn't. So, in, until you actually go to meetings and see how they get along, um, I think we should reserve judgment on it, on it being rocky, because these people.
Really, because we can hear it up here. It's brought to our attention how rocky it is.
Between the, between like my power.
Just on the last couple meetings, yes, it's very rocky, and.
I would disagree.
And that's fine, you can disagree, but we need to watch this, and I, if it continues down this path, I would just, I would just vote to dissolve the committee.
Why is that? Going back to how we had it before.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that's what caused this.
We'll just see how it goes, that's why I say, let's see how it goes.
Asher, can you, Bob, pick up the microphone closer? I can barely hear you.
Is it on now?
You hear it now?
Well, that might be.
It's, it's not. Is it on now?
Seems.
There you go.
Can you hear it?
I can hear you now. Yeah.
Perfect, perfect. Uh, the second on our agenda is the Cemetery Survey Agreement. Uh, you, you know, this was brought, uh, to the, uh, city council back in, uh, I believe, October, uh, that's when we came up, because this was talked in our committee, uh, spoke about in our committee, but it, it was never actually brought back to the committee to see what these two bids were. And, uh, in October, this was actually tabled, this is something that we've been working on for basically the last four years now, trying to open that cemetery up, because in the, in the South Oak Grove Cemetery, what we have going on there is we got a lot of limited space. So that, those spaces are running out, what we like to do is we like to go into the North Oak Grove Cemetery, where we have a lot of citizens that actually want to be, I know that's where I wanted to be, with my late wife, of course, that's not going to happen because it wasn't open at the time. Uh, I spent about thirty hours out there trying to get things worked off, just couldn't do it at time, so, uh, we had to come over to the, to the South Oak Grove Cemetery, but, uh, again, this was tabled, so we could go ahead and have a chance to really physically sit down, talk about this matter. We may go ahead and invite, uh, Forrest with, uh, Mr. Kim to one of the meetings. If you remember, we had, uh, two bids that was originally, uh, put together, I'm going to go ahead and hand these out.
Uh, I think we ought to go.
Do you have those?
Yeah, I think that is.
Okay.
You do have those. Do, did you have Snyder's to go?
Uh, I feel.
That is. That was the other one that was. This was the one we talked about before we ended up. Okay. Yeah, this was right before you.
Thank you.
And so, we kind of looked into this, and, and, uh, we had a chance to stay with, uh, Forrest and, and his cohort, uh, personally, they, they came to the last meeting up at, uh, City Hall, went down through their bid with us, uh, kind of showed us exactly what areas of the cemetery, uh, that was going to be, uh, considered, which I'll hand these down. So, uh, with, with, uh, Richard Kim's, uh, bid, uh, their bid was, uh, was, uh, that complete eleven thousand eight hundred dollar bid, that included basically coming in and surveying off everything that's highlighted in yellow here. So basically, it'd be the whole east side of that cemetery, we're looking at, uh, we conferred with Jim, uh, we're looking at probably five, uh, plus spaces still left in, in that, uh, that cemetery. You know, there's several up here that are open, but for the time being, this is what we're looking at opening, uh, uh, along this highlighted line. Uh, Forrest also said that he could go ahead and, and do a lot of other things to, uh, uh, Forrest. Uh, the other bid that I just handed out was Snyder and Associates, that, uh, if you remember, some of you weren't on the committee at the time, but if you remember, that was eighteen hundred dollars an hour, if all, if all the facets were utilized at one time, which here's the fee schedule to, to the individuals. Uh, when I spoke with them, they had never marked a cemetery off before, and so that's, that's why I wanted to come up here and speak with the council back in October. Uh, so, um, again, we did have Forrest, uh, come to the meeting, I'd like to go ahead and invite Forrest up and have him come up and, and explain what, what everyone, what in this.
Did you get any other bids besides B and K?
Uh, we got, uh, B and K, and we got Snyder's.
Was there any other ones given after that?
Those were the two that were given to us by, by Jim.
I guess, let me rephrase that, did you seek other bids besides B and K? And, Ash, when it comes to the survey and this eleven eight, where does that sit for budget-wise?
Yeah, it's around ten, ten to eleven.
So it's going to fit in the budget, or they're going to be well over?
Yeah, I consider the budget, it's thirty-five thousand dollars.
On top of everything else that's going to be coming out?
Yes, because we didn't work on this for over a year and a half.
It's, it's, it's been pretty close to two years now, we, we started talking about it four years ago.
Yeah.
Because of the positions, but it's going to be a natural payback, uh, if you have five hundred plus, uh, spots out there, uh, the fee for the, the cemetery class now is four hundred dollars a piece, you take that times five hundred, that's what, two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. That is, if you live in the city store, if you live outside the city store, it's four hundred thirty dollars, uh, and that's what's in the rules and regulations that we have now. So.
And the Snyder, just, we have no clue or potential to, to know exactly what that will end up costing us.
Uh, with Snyder's, uh, when I spoke with him, I, I said, is this eighteen hundred dollars an hour? And he said, it's eighteen hundred dollars an hour, if all those facets within these phases, uh, on the back here, if all these are utilized at one time, you're looking at eighteen hundred dollars an hour. Uh, he said, we have no clue, uh, how long that would take, as we've never done one before, so, that's basically, I was on the phone looking for about forty-five minutes of, uh.
So one facet could take several hours, you know, I mean.
Of course, all those facets aren't going to be utilized at one time, but at some points they will.
Right. But you could have one that goes in thirty hours, just one.
Yeah.
And almost in the, like, I use the principle two, I'm not saying it happened, but I use principle two, you know, eighty-eight hundred dollars, you're going to have thirty hours, thirty hours total.
Yeah.
You know.
And I guess the, the one thing that, uh, I personally didn't hear more was, uh, you never, with that one, you never, you really don't know where you're ending that just, you know, and I guess when I'm going to a job, I want to know exactly what my fees are going to be upfront, you know, before I can go on with that job, so, I mean, that's always important to find this stuff.
So, my only concern is, I don't, I mean, B and K, sure, my concern is the budget, because once we start getting into mowing, spraying, cameras, software, and I know you, we have a grant, and I don't know where all that sits, but the software and.
I worked with Kristen, and so we get that grant.
All this other stuff, but it's going to start pushing the budget.
Because what was that, what was that grant again?
Uh, I thought that, I don't remember how much the grant was, but I remember it was for gates and software.
Yeah.
Right?
Whatever it was for, it was actually for surveying and software, that's what that was.
No, I was for gates and software, either way, I mean, it's a fifty-fifty match, I believe. And it's still, I mean, the budget's only thirty-five, so.
I would say to go, and I, if I have to leave this.
What we'd like to do is go ahead and have, uh, Forrest come up and, and explain to me what he, explain to us the other meetings, it was very informational, uh, that these guys are willing to go, willing to help and beyond, what was really, even though it's a lot of thousands of dollars, so, you know, if they're always out with other facets in the cemetery as well, so, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to go over there, come over here, see what he has to say.
Sure.
Thanks.
Forrest Aldrich, Eastern Kim, I'm the city engineer.
Hi, Forrest.
I'm Councilman Kawa. Uh, before I forget, I promised I would bring these maps back, so there's. So those are originals back, and I ran off copies as well, so here are paper copies, Mayor, you had asked for some paper copies, so, um, I'm giving, I'm giving those to Ash, you can get to you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, they're eleven by seventeen, and then I'll email electronic copies of the maps, the rolled-up maps, uh, tomorrow. So what we're proposing to do is, the first thing we're going to do is, I think, the cemetery, that east boundary, we need to tighten up the boundaries, where is that property line, especially on the east line? Because it's, this is basically like you're plating a subdivision, is what you're doing, uh, it's kind of the mentality, you have to go into this, is kind of plating a subdivision. So, we need to know the borders of the cemetery, so the first thing we'll do is make sure where are the borders, and then, uh, we have lanes that we'll put in, and then we'll have the plots that we'll put in, and we'll mark the plots with, uh, markers, and we'll talk to Jim, we'll make sure we do it the same way, that the cemetery is marked out there now, so we stay consistent with how things are marked and how things are found. We'll do iron pins so that you can actually find them with a, uh, metal detector rather than a brick or a stone like you're doing now.
That's good.
So, uh, and each one will have a cap on the top, we're not doing, we talked about maybe doing individual markers for each plot, but the cost of that would start going up too high, so, we think just with, uh, with the marker and the maps that we'll provide, that, uh, that should be good enough for what we're doing. So, yeah, we've met with the Cemetery Committee, and we're on board with this, we have done these numerous times, uh, with cemeteries, laying them out, so this is not the first time we've done this. Uh, licensed land surveyor will certify everything, so, uh, we have, uh, we have several licensed land surveyors, and he actually lives in Creston and drives right through this interchange coming to our office, so, this comes through here all the time, every day.
Yeah, I've got a quick question, how close to the property line can we have?
We'll probably want to have a road, a roadway along that east boundary.
I was going to say, I didn't know how that worked with the private property to the east there.
We'll, we'll want to have a road. And we'll work with the Cemetery Committee on the layout that they want, and where they want the roads, and there's a drainage swale that cuts through there that we have to avoid, you know, to work around, you know, so we'll work around that too.
For sort of Ash, did Jim be involved in those conversations also?
Oh, sure. Yeah. And Jim was at the Cemetery Committee. And Jim was at the cemetery committee meeting, we were talking about that.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
And we, just so everybody knows, during our meeting the other day, we kind of put Jim in charge of that, so he's going to, Forrest, to make sure it's being handled exactly as he wants it to be. Since he's the one there at the cemetery, he's the one that, so they're going to kind of work, you know, that's where the rest of the circle is doing everything. So pretty much that's what we're working on. That's what, you know, just where the dirt and the kitches are to be done. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. So, you know, what we'd like to do is try to, I don't know what your guys' standards are, we'd like to try to get this into an ASAP, you know, idea that right now, we can't, there's a lot of things that you can do, you cannot handle cemetery right now, no different than we can, we can't really do lots of stuff right now because of like, roads and grounds, stuff like that. So, I mean, we'd like to get a point on this. If not, I understand if you guys need to, have time to think about it, but I'd try to get something going on this here relatively quickly. I know there's a couple individuals that are here, who were here, as I know, that we were earlier, we had to be very intelligent people to pass cemeteries, so, you know, I was trying to do that. Kind of moving on, I mean, you guys have any questions?
Well, I was just going to ask you, you know, you're on your survey agreement part of your presentation.
Yeah.
And it says it is the recommendation, the city store sent you a committee that you approved for the tour bid, so you are recommending now?
That's what we're recommending.
Right?
Yeah, we're recommending Eastern Kim. It's who we'd like to do this. So, yeah. We would like to go ahead and move forward with them. They have a, they have a really great bid there. I just know surveying houses, where we come in and surveying houses. You're looking at 900 for two pins, so to get two pins, you're at pretty much, pretty close to $1,800, you know, depending on how much time it takes. So really, that's going to add up to be quite a bit of money. I've been working around cemeteries for 22 years, small cemeteries such as this one, big cemeteries as big as 128th Cemetery. So, you know, those cemeteries had 10 to 15 barrels of pay. So this is kind of small stuff for us, but nevertheless, that is the guy that we, that's the company that we would want to go ahead and recommend to the council.
And it's really an endeavor that will bring, bring that money back in. It might not be in one lump sum or anything, it might be over a few years, but the city's going to see that cost come back in the sale of plots.
It's going to come back pretty quick with the sale of the plots. Now, always keep in mind with the sale of any position, the state law, and it doesn't matter whether it's here in Iowa, if it's in Missouri, I operated there, I operated in Kansas, so much of that, that's 20% in the state of Iowa. So if you sell a position for $400, 20% has to go into the potential care fund. And that is to go to be able to continue the cemetery if something happened to the city, or if something happened to one of the group cemeteries. That way they can, one, group cemeteries have to do the same thing, just simply because, unless it's a nonprofit or cemetery or down under the border, you know, lots of big, you know, that's a, that's a completely different aspect. But municipality cemetery has to be, has to hold back 20% of any sale position, so. Even at that, you're still, you're still going to make your own back pretty, pretty quick with five other positions. I mean, it is going to be tight.
Right. I hope not.
By all means, but it's going to be relatively. Because I, I speak with individuals almost every day. Today I was asked twice, you know, how close we are to opening that cemetery. And that's that hesitation I had this morning, kind of before, you know? So, you know, I would be asked quite a few times. I know Alberta has been asked by one, a draw, three, many times, and, you know, it's just something that we really need to get done, because we're getting pretty tight in that separate group cemetery. You know, I came in, bought 20 positions at one time, so I bought a place where we hold a matrician, the positions were right, they're on, they're empty, but, so, you know, I bought those there for my family to get home, and, so, you know, there's...
And if we had to get additional space out there by not doing this, but we had to look at additional space, if we went across to the east of the south cemetery?
Yeah.
Is that in the state of city limits or?
That, I believe is in the room. That's Sergeant's on the ground there. I'm not sure. You know, where the South Grove Cemetery is, that's, is that city limits?
Okay.
Yeah.
City limits.
So it's not something that we'd have to look at?
We'd be years down the road, you know? If we have 500 positions, really to be honest with you, as far as what, how I think of the cemetery, you know, with 500 positions still open, it's not going to be something that I'm highly going to have to go out the rest of the time on, you know, that's not my priority, you know, that's going to be an issue. Yeah, she's going to have to, if something's going to have to, to be done. I mean, that, you know?
Isn't satisfying for years to come, right now?
For right now. Because that was the biggest part was, now, when we first started talking about that, the biggest thing was, is we were looking at the land, the new land was very, very expensive. I said, why not go after the cemetery and open it back up? Because when I came back in '07, I was hoping no burials could be taken, no burials could take place in the group cemetery unless they already have positions. That's what I was hoping, that's what I was slapping. Well, I went out there, reached the entire cemetery, because I could reach for bodies, there's nobody there, you know? They would say, well, I think there's potter still there, there's no potter still in that section, that's the best section of the cemetery. Potters still is not the best section of the cemetery by any means. So there was no one there. I said, we need to really revisit opening that up, so we don't have a lot of money out. Say it was a taxpayer, you know, how much you guys expect as little as possible.
And you said Jim will oversee this?
He's going to oversee that, yeah.
And you're okay with that recommendation?
Yeah. Forrest and I have worked together for years, yeah.
Right, that makes sense to do that, so.
As long as we're okay with budget.
So I guess that's our recommendation.
Standing by James.
Second.
Second in by Mike.
So how do you vote? Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Talbot?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda was the cameras. This is something too that we've been talking a lot about. I know Jim and I have talked about this for a long time in our committees, we've talked about it, you know, there's been a lot of vandalism in that North Oak Grove Cemetery. Over the years, we've had to go out, put stones back up. And just with the North Oak Grove Cemetery, that seems to be a spot where they're going to go. When they get back in there, you can't see them, they're unnoticeable. So what we proposed was to go ahead and get a camera on that particular cemetery. We've kind of took Jim's suggestions as far as where to mount that, where to place that within the cemetery. You know, I know there's a lot of things still to have at that meeting. We also have Mary Pease's boy Tyler was invited to that meeting. We really don't know anything about cameras. He came in, made a wonderful presentation. This was the camera that he said he's used many times in the past. Dolly probably knows more about that than I do. I really don't know anything about cameras, but this is the one that he recommended with the best photo qualities. It is able to be Wi-Fi directly to your phone, so you can get the light feeds. It does have a card in there too, that may need to be replaced every once in a while, but nevertheless, it will take photos on that card as well. But the nice thing about it is, is once it gets motioned, it will send it to your phone. So I know within our cemetery committee, I know personally myself, I wanted gate cameras on every single gate, you know? I wanted, South one time too. We took a vote, and the vote went to one camera, the North Oak Grove Cemetery to start off with. See how that works for us. In this bid, you'll find, kind of laid everything out. Tyler kind of brought this all up that night. So we're looking at about $199, $200 for that metal camera, unless we can get it on sale. Then, he said sometimes during the day or during the year, they'll do a sale on that. $29 activation fee, and then we'd have about $120 a year on the maintenance cord to the Wi-Fi of the camera. And then your SD card was $17, that was a pretty high-fi card Tyler's going to look out for us. So our recommendation is that we go ahead and move forward with this. We'd like to run that past you. Jim, what his plan was, was where the gates are on that North Oak Grove Cemetery, is to go ahead and mount that camera to one of the pillars, the backside where it's not seen, it can not get damaged. You'll notice there's a case in there too, that protects the camera as well, so it can't be taken, having, if we're going to take the camera. So it's going to have to really close down. So basically, our recommendation is that we move forward with that. I think it's going to help with those type of things, and that hopefully helps with that, hopefully stops some of the traffic we have going in there. And if there is damage in the cemetery, at least we can kind of go back and find out who's doing that damage. Because I tell you what, I know Jim and I, we organized a group 10, probably 15 years, or 12 years ago now, let's just say 12 years ago, where we were in it, we put up, I can't tell you how many stones we put up, I didn't do any damage, but we leveled a lot, we put up a lot of stones. If I were just to go in there and do that, just on my own, you'd be able to buy a lot of pieces of that, that would cost money to go out and do that. But we just want to...
Hopefully, I use it as a deterrent, hopefully?
That's what we hope.
And if it does catch something, then that gives our law enforcement something to do?
Something to go for.
Go on and set it as well, you know, we can see it.
Yeah, and we've kind of talked with Dave about this. We spoke with the police officers, you know, about the gates opening and closing. In the rain, Jim and Corey are going to take care of opening them. At night, the police are working with the police, so that should look out excellent if they're under those two. That's going to just deter people a lot, so. Thank you everybody.
So who's going to get the notifications?
That's something that we haven't spoke about at this point, so that's something that I'll talk back to any committee.
Yeah, right.
You know, that's something to watch for. And we need to come back up, and even one thing else, as a committee, we want you guys to know everything that we do. You know, we can't come up, we can't spend money, we can't do any of that stuff without going through you guys first, so, you know, we want this to be, we want to work with you.
You might be able to send them.
Can you?
I think so.
Okay. Because are you familiar with this one here?
Other ones, but I know Tyler and Tanner have these, but I think they hold, yeah.
Okay.
I think that he has one.
Okay.
Jim could have one. He pre-acted that one.
Because I have a thing, you know, we have, we honestly, if we're multiple people, if they would want that too, because they're the first ones on the scene, it's not going to be, you guys, to get a good place in front of the show now. So we'll visit with them too, and they're going to figure out what they will include and what they can, that's what we're trying to do.
So is there any certain times of the year you're seeing more vandalism out there? Is it weekly, is it monthly, year?
You know, we haven't, thank goodness, we haven't seen many for a long time. There's a lot of that activity out there. I know, I know a year or a while back, my mother called me and said, there's people back there in the cemetery. I know I spoke with Corey, contacted him several times, and we had that the last year. He reported that on the occasion, so they're back there too. Thank goodness there hasn't been very much vandalism since that time. You know, now there are some stones out, I can't say whether it was one that took them down. I have usually six of them that are down now that we actually recovered back when we repaired the cemetery. Like I said, I can't, I can't blame them on anybody, because I don't know a lot about this. So, you know, hopefully with these cameras, with this camera, we can, at least we'll be able to know who to speak for.
Did you have issues with people burying family members from the South of without permission? Has that ever happened in the North Side? And this could alter that too, so no, it's not. Just like irregular vandalism, like knocking a stone over, you know? You know, illegally placing somebody else in a pot, that, you know, they may look at them practicing to buy you.
Yeah, and that's one thing within the cemetery, and that's hard to explain to folks that why they can't open up the way they were before, or why we have a lot of containment at the city as far as how many people are there. You know, there's really, our rules and regulations state right now that one burial, one full-size burial can be on the grave. If recreated, two burials can be on the grave for space. You know, we've had in the past, which people, as Mike said, went out there and buried multiple people on one spot, not calling the city. It puts a lot of liability on that, on the city, because you don't know if they're still within the boundaries. I know I'd seen, I was out at South Monmouth when it was, it was really late, and I seen a kid bring their stone across to the cemetery. I thought, to be honest with you, I thought he had permission, but at that point in time, there's no rules and regulations, that's why I put the evidence back in the beginning when we first started, we put those together because he was out there at South, so, and so I didn't come to indicate that people do that. You know, unbeknownst to me, I didn't know he didn't have permission to do that. So, you know, it's going to kind of deter that, you know, the gates and the hours on the cemetery. And those gates, once they're closed, that's going to deter people from going in, because we're going to have to bark out on the road and tell those gates out. So, you know, we're, we just want to show the citizens that we are.
Can I interrupt for one second? On that note, Dave, is that investigation still ongoing? Have you guys got anywhere with that?
We were talking with the city committee about the differences of legally what to do with it and where it stood.
Are we still at a standstill with that?
I mean, yeah. The last email I had gotten from her was that it was not going to be, it was something that she was going to take care of, but I don't know if she...
As in Beverly Wild was going to take care of it? Ash, can you follow up on that?
Please.
To make sure that it gets taken care of.
And I did speak with Beverly Wild, and what was that, Senator?
Whether it's...
She brought that up, that for a second.
Right. I mean, if it's not criminal, I'd like to get some paperwork at least, somehow I can get it built.
I would, that's...
That particular instance.
And, as Christina said, you know, that is the recommendation of the cemetery committee too, because it's not on here tonight, but since Christina got that...
I did bring it up, because I knew that Dave was dealing with this, so.
And that's good, yeah, because that's the recommendation that we go forward with trying to collect those issues, you know, a lot of that. So, like I said, on the other spot, we've got one different spot, so you have to, you know, looking for that.
On the camera like this, is it clear enough to get the license plate or just a good vehicle description?
I think that'd be the issue, if they're not blazing fast, I don't think it should have a problem. And I would think you get them coming in and help, you know?
And you have the potential for a back license plate, depending on where you put it.
That gate there is pretty narrow, you know, through that old cemetery. I can really get through there in the truck, so we can, you know, we're going to...
And you'll know, right? You've set it out there for a year or whatever, you're going to know.
And hopefully, if you catch them, you know, we're not trying to get into any trouble for just going out there. What we want to do is find out where... What we wanna do is find out what you're doing out there.
I'm not saying you couldn't take Tyler containers, put it on there and drive it, but I, I think we were perfect.
Maybe the gates are closed, they're not supposed to be in there anyway.
But I think the problem is, is north gate, the north cemetery, the gates are, are they operational?
I think they were.
I mean, I know you guys were, but.
So those will be closed at the same time, you know, for the, for the back.
Sure.
I mean, there's only so much we can do.
Yeah.
You know, but if we're taking the steps to kind of deter that smoke, if it gets hot in here.
I'll go ahead and, uh, make the motion that, uh, we purchase the camera and not, uh, agree to go over the five hundred dollars.
By Corey, seconded by Dave.
Dave, how do you go with that, Rick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Love off?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi. You can?
Nope.
I still have one.
I just think that.
I still have one.
Is this one not in our package?
It was in.
Is that not in our package?
No, I don't think so.
So, back in, uh, December, uh, we was, uh, talking about the mowing contract, uh, for moving on. Uh, the reason we're, we were, we were even speaking about this, number one is because, uh, we had a gentleman by the name of Cory that was mowing the cemetery. Uh, he had to, it was agreed upon a, a, a two-year time limit. However, there was no, no contract that had ever been signed. And so, you know, as a committee, uh, we decided, okay, let's go ahead and do the, uh, the cemetery mowing screen at this point in time. Uh, and so that's what we started with at that point. Um, just on this page that I do. Uh, a lot of different things were thrown around. Uh, last year, we bid out the mowing in March and then the spring was bid out in August. This is what took place. My thing has always been, and I know we discussed it with the committee, our feelings on that is we wanna know what our exact cost is at one point. And, and so what we would like to do, and it's our recommendation as far as the cemetery committee, is to go ahead and combine the, the spring and the mowing contracts moving forward. Uh, that would simply mean that those individuals that are actually spraying and those individuals that, uh, the same individual that's mowing, they're licensed, they're bonded and they're insured for both of those. Uh, you know, you could do it a hundred different ways. We view that this way as if something happens in the cemetery, if things aren't getting done, we go with one person. We don't have to go to multiple people. We don't have fingers being put on it, uh, at one another, why this isn't getting done or why that's not getting done. It makes sense to go on the front bid. That way we know what that bid is upfront and we move forward from there. Uh, you know, of course, if it does go over, the other nice thing that we liked about that is if it goes over what our budget is, we have to go back to just those people that bid on the job and that, that's it. If we split that apart, who do we go after? So if, if we did it again the same way we did last year, where we had the mowing bid at the end of the year and the spraying bid at the end of the year, you, you could very well be out of money by the end of the year. Then we're having to come back up to you, figure out what we're gonna do at, at that point in time. Uh, with this plan, we're not gonna do that because if they all come back over bid, then we can, we can go back to them and say, hey, look, everybody's over. You guys need to sharpen your pencils and try to get this to fit within our, our scope of things. We're not gonna tell you what that scope is, but we need to get close to what that is. Uh, the other thing that was kind of thrown out the other day was, was, uh, putting both bids in the paper at one time. You know, and, and we could, that could very easily work as well. However, you know, you thought, okay, you're still gonna go back to two more people if they're over. If the mowing comes back over, over budget and the spraying comes back over the budget, who do you go after? Do you go after the mowing guys? Do you go after the spraying guys? Who, who do you go after? It could be multiple people at that point, but we do need to make sure that these guys are, are licensed, uh, are bonded. No different than us going out there with cemetery. We have to have a million dollar insurance policy. We also have to have a bond issued, uh, which is a thousand dollars that's held in trust here with the city. And, uh, in case we do something, you guys can go ahead and take money out of that bond. Uh, so our recommendation, uh, moving forward, uh, is, is to go ahead and combine these. We, we all sat down as a committee, I believe you were there, Mike, and at that committee meeting, uh, we all worked on this. It took literally about an hour and a half to work on these two forms here. The contractual procedures, uh, if you're looking at those, those contracting procedures were the same contractor procedures that we had in place when Christina and Jim was on there as well. We had those in force, uh, for the two thousand twenty-one mowing season. However, there was a few items that were added on there. If you look on there, uh, where it says, uh, where it says, uh, trimming. The thing we added underneath there is that the last mowing will always include the trimming because some of those weren't trimmed this year. He trimmed the time before and so the rule stated every other time, well, that last mowing needs to have, uh, trimming done too. That way everything's already good for spring. Uh, the other thing that was added on here was that the grass should not be at any given time over five to six inches tall. Uh, then include weeds, that would be the grass. Really can't do anything about the weeds, the spraying guys, the weeds. So, you know, uh, those were the two things. We did change the image up above because prior to, uh, December's week, we were always called the mow. And we were switched to a committee, so that language has been changed in the document. So that was changed up above on the spring. We went over that with Jim as well. We made a lot of changes on that. Uh, the, the second page there, and Cory's looking at that now. That would be the document that we sent to the district, uh, to, to go ahead and, and, uh, run. It would be to really get that in there because, uh, people, because they're in doubt too. They have to find that and get people to go. So, but our recommendation is that.
Include those, right?
Yeah.
Procedures.
Yep.
I was, um, because last week somebody came up and talked about blowing the grass too.
Uh-huh.
But the placement's covered under trimming probably.
You mean, uh, blowing the grass off feet and the stuff. I, I know Cory, uh, I spoke to him on several different occasions and, and he did do a very good job at blowing, uh, the grass off. The thing is, and, and Jim will concur with us, if, if, if we ask the mowing guys to go blow each stone off, most of the time that's done with the mowing. You know, this year, this two thousand twenty-one, I'll be honest with you, I didn't have one call to the funeral home, which we always got the calls. Not one phone call came into the funeral home saying, hey, you know, uh, this was done, we have grass on the stone. Never had one call years previous who did. And, and so that's, that's a plus. So we're moving in the right direction, uh, on things. Uh, but, I mean, I think if we mandated that they blow the stones off each time, you know, of course, I mean, we're in the mowing business, it, it's gonna take more time and that's gonna add to the bids.
See, those pictures you showed us last time, when, when was those taken? Was that last year?
Uh-uh.
No?
No, that was two years ago.
Oh, two years ago, okay.
Yeah. And I have pictures on my, uh, my, but I do have pictures at the funeral home, previous years too.
I don't think anything of this was brought up due to the fact that the previous mower did a.
No, no, not in.
He did a fabulous job and everybody was like that, I think he did. The biggest thing is, is that the mower, the guy who was mowing chose not to finish his contract. And so that's why this is coming to the table, because he chose not to. And he didn't sign a formal contract, even though, I mean, us accepting his bid should have constituted a contract, but.
But I know what I did.
In all sense, there was not a written contract and he chose not to continue this year. So now it has come to light, now.
And one of, one of his biggest, uh, cause I had called him and, and tried to find out what was going on. Uh, because he did do a really good job, I thought. Uh, one of the biggest issues, uh, was towards the end of the year, there was going back and forth as far as when spraying should be done, should be sprayed before the mow or should be sprayed after the mow, you know, I, and that's up to them to, to, to decide. But that become pretty, pretty, that, that little mushroom, pretty quickly. If, you know, one said, you know, it, it should be sprayed by the seven days prior to mowing, uh, the other one said that it, it doesn't really need to be. So, you know, uh, both of them were spray guys and, and I'm sure, you know, both of them know, but.
Go through those. Um, I, I agree with most of what you're saying here. My problem is, we don't, yes, it does look fabulous when it's sprayed out there. We don't have to spray. If we run out of money, we don't have to spray. So if we take bids from just mowing guys and just spraying guys, I'd rather much see it like that divided up or, and you have in here no subcontracting. I wouldn't have a problem with that either, but I'm just saying, you know, you, you were saying, you know, we, we could be pushing against budget money-wise if we had them separate, but like I said, you don't have to spray.
You don't have to, but you do wanna spray because otherwise you're gonna have people complaining again that there's, there's coal there out there. I, I know I wanna spray as a taxidermist, we pay enough tax.
But in years, I mean, we haven't sprayed for years and years and years way back. I mean, this is, when have we started spraying? I mean, when did we start spraying?
It's been.
Jim Donlin.
John?
Ten years ago, consecutive year.
Yeah.
Before that, Jim Donlin.
So it hasn't been used since, almost since I've been back here. That's all I've ever known is that cemetery.
Last year, the two spraying bids that were received, right, two spraying bids?
Uh, I don't know if there was more. We never saw.
And.
There was two.
Yeah. Was, there was a big difference between the two, correct?
Concerned.
And the chemicals were wrong on one of the bids, correct?
Sure.
So, so that's a big concern for me. I mean, I like, like you said, I'd like to keep it separate. You mean, bid them at the same time, that's fine, I don't care. But keep them separate so you know what chemicals are being used, what your cost is. And then it allows your mowing guys, cause I think last year when we looked at the mowing bids, one, was it one person maybe did both mowing and spraying and the rest of the bids were just mowers?
Right.
So, limits.
And just like, yeah, yeah, limits. There's a lot of lawn care guys out there that would probably enjoy mowing them, but they don't have their spraying licenses.
And nor maybe they don't want to.
And they don't want to.
It's a big liability.
And so that's my concern, uh, we, the cemetery committee are, are trying to hire someone to, to beautify the cemetery. I'm not gonna mow it if I'm not gonna be the one spraying it. Because if you're hiring me to, to beautify my cemetery, I can't really beautify it if I'm not in charge of spraying it too. That's, that's, that's my outlook on it. The other thing is, is, yeah, you don't have to spray it. However, as a taxidermist, I want you to spray it. Uh, also at the same time, you know, if you did a one and done bid, I can come back to you and say, Cory, you need to, you need to sharpen your pencil. You know, you put them in any house clip. I'm not gonna go into a house clip not knowing what these, and I'm not, if, if this guy does two things and this guy only does one thing, I'm gonna be dealing with it, I guess, one thing, because I know he's, I'm not gonna stop you.
But you sub-contract.
I don't like the subcontracting because the, the subcontracting must be, now, say you hired me to mow and I don't have my spraying license, I subcontract out of that spraying license. If something happens out there in the cemetery, then lawsuits start happening. I know like on my wife's stone out there, it was out there, basically, I'm gonna be honest with you, probably not even a week and it was hit and, and chunked off. But the thing about it is, is if, you know, we can't have that anymore and we gotta control the limited amount of people that are in that cemetery to try to keep it to the word that's said.
So the thing with the subcontracting is, no different than building a house. You subcontract through your houses and your.
But that one contractor takes care of everything.
Correct, but it's something back on the mowing contractor. If he's submitting his spraying and.
He's responsible for it all.
He's responsible for it all. So if something goes wrong with the spraying, he better have his.
So are we. Are we going to make sure that the spraying guys, who, who's in charge of getting, considering at this point, we would have the copies of the insurance all at one time? Now, if you start subcontracting X, Y, Z out, you know, I'm gonna wanna know exactly where the, uh, where the insurance is on these guys.
Well, you have, your, your mower has a million dollar law, has an insurance.
But if they're not covering my spraying.
But, I mean, you could require this, the spraying contractor to submit, it's like, I mean, you have to know that they have a license.
You could, the subcontractor would.
Right, but the mower would have to submit the license along with everything else of the subcontractor. I mean, you can make that requirement. So, you know, I mean.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, what we're thinking of as budgetary, because like I said, if we get five guys that come back and they're all over the budget, I'm not gonna say what the budget is in case these guys are listening. Uh, but nevertheless, if they all come in over that budget, we're gonna go back to them and say, hey, look, guys, we're gonna need to look at this. We got, if there's five bids, we only have five people to go up to. If, if we do two bids in the paper, we, who knows how many you're gonna go, go back to. And, 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 you know, uh, in a lot of the rules and regulations that state that, you know, uh, that we have to come here and recommend, uh, of what we can, what we.
I, I do have questions. So there was a, there was a comment about chemicals were wrong, and your ad specifically has what chemicals are to be used.
Mm-hmm.
And I could be wrong, cause I have not the greatest memory, but I don't think even chemicals were in the bid in the paper last year. It just said bids are being accepted. They, they were probably.
Acceptable products were X, Y, Z.
Yeah, it said in the paper or was it when they, when they called?
It said, no, it said it in the paper. It didn't say how many gallons, but it did say that these are the acceptable products to, to be used. I mean, Jim.
Okay, I just couldn't remember if it was actually in the paper. And I, and I know Jim helped with these, uh, as I said in that meeting, that he helped write, uh, these contractor procedures and he did suggestion of, uh, putting the forty gallons in this ad, uh, on there. So, uh, I know the committee appreciates his input on that. And I know we can do all kinds of subcontracting and I appreciate that, I, I, I understand this. But I think, you know, it is, it is our purview to say how we want things done.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody has just, is just a mower, doesn't have a sprayer, maybe and they want to work for the city, then maybe they go get their spraying licenses, you know? We have that right to, to determine that. It's not because we, we hate people that just, you know, mow and don't spray, but we have that right.
But that's, that's not fair.
Ash, can we listen to Jim's recommendation out of the committee?
But I will, I will say this one last thing. Uh, Jim wasn't that, he, he did help us kind of revise that, that bid, uh, what's.
Right, and this is the committee recommendation.
Yeah, and we, we did revise everything that, uh, we wanted, you know, I had twenty gallons, uh, pretty good. He said forty, it's a very good, he's wish, forty gallons, great, so we, uh, we worked together on this and this is what, uh, this is what we can look at this as a confirmation of.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Jim. You want Jim to talk? May I would like Jim to, uh, talk?
I've been taking care of it for quite a while, um, the cemetery, the mowing and spraying, everything. Um, my recommendation still is to keep it in two separate contracts. My recommendation still is to keep it in two separate contracts. It's easier to control your costs because as a few of you probably know, when you're bidding a combined contract, mowing and spraying, spraying is where you pad your bid. That drives the cost up considerably. So to keep our costs down, my recommendation is to have a bid separately at the same time of the year, but separately. That's what our local school district does. They bid their mowing and spraying separately.
At the same time?
At the same time. And that reason for that is to control costs. Because it's pretty easy to drive the costs up in the spraying side of it.
And I know that because I've been there. Have you, have you done this in the, in the past, you've done separate?
Yes.
How many bids did you?
We had two bids last year for, for spraying. Uh, mowing, we had, I think, five bids total, but, six bids total, but two of the bids did not follow the bid documents. As in length of time, um, for the mowing cycle.
Yeah, I was curious. How many bids even?
And I mean, if, if it is an issue that combined, they go over the, they go over your threshold, then you just, in the advertisement, it simply says that the city reserves the right to refuse any and all bids. You have to rebid. If you're, you know, if your combined numbers come, come in over.
So, so just let me ask you that. So you're saying if we went forward with this as a combined bid first and it came back, you could have a rebid, maybe as a separate bid? Could you do that?
Not necessarily because.
I'm, I'm just clarifying what you were trying to say, I, that's for me.
No, what I'm saying is if you take a mowing bid and a spraying bid and your total, your lowest spraying bid and your lowest mowing bid come in over your contract, then you know that you need to request new bids.
Just the same you would on a combined bid. If it was combined and it came in over, you'd say we need new bids.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's, it's not really any different, really, because you can still get too high bids with two separate bids. You can still get high bids, too high a bid with combined bid.
That, that's true, but you're, you're expanding your bidder base when you separate.
Right. You're eliminating guys that just do one or the other if you do it combined. That's why I'm saying you need to make it fair for everyone.
When you're bidding them separately, you increase your bidder base.
Got another question. You, I think it's been hit on, but if you had a combined bid in your experience in the past, they inflated the bid because of the spraying.
I wouldn't say they've inflated the bid, but that does happen.
Cause I'm, I'm wondering if, if you're only, only getting five mowing bids, two spraying bids, give or take. Could we do a combined one? I always think when you combine something, you get a discount, but apparently that's not the case.
But Cory knows that firsthand.
Right, right. I'm just thinking, combined bid or separate. I didn't know if you could do, if we could just take all of them, but apparently it's one or the other because they'll actually.
Well, it's, it's not a guarantee that they do, okay? It's the, I don't think anybody can say that when you combine it, you're gonna have somebody that inflated the bid. Doesn't happen, probably yet. Could it happen with a, with single bid? Like could they inflated on a spring, on a single bid? So it's like, it's, it's no different, really, one or the other.
But you get your true cost.
The thing is however, it really never was get out prior to this last year. It, it, it been.
It was early and then it wasn't for a short period of time.
For a long period of time. So we've never tried it this way before. What we would like to do is try it this way, see how it works. The worst thing that could happen is it doesn't work when we were back, you know? But we ultimately think that this is the, this is the way to go. I mean, it hasn't been bid out for ten, it wasn't bid out for ten years.
Jim, what's your thought on the subcontracting if it was combined?
I have no issue with subcontracting. And we deal, in city projects, we deal with subcontractors all the time. Whether it be a paving project, a sewer plant project, whatever it is, we deal with subcontractors all the time. The ultimate way, it falls to the responsibility of the general contractor, so.
But you.
That's all I've got, guys.
Okay.
But are those subcontractors held to certain standards? Cause I know that, that, that spray app here didn't have.
Hold down now to the idea of two bids separate or combined. That's where we add right there. Once the council makes the ultimate decision, we have the recommendation from the committee. Thank you for that. We have the recommendation from the public works director. And it seems like we just have to decide was a two bid combined, so.
Can I make a motion?
Who oversees the procedures?
The what?
The contractor procedures. Who's going to be the one that oversees this committee?
The cemetery committee as is the governing body of the cemetery. If you look at their roles and regulations, the cemetery committee is the governing body.
The, the thing of it is, whoever bids this, if, if I wanna mow and spray, that's my bid. I'm putting a vote, I'm, I'm putting it together. But if one guy wants to just mow it, he's gonna put a bid in. So grab all the bids, separate it. Cause we're gonna get all the bids either together or apart anyway. They're gonna land right here.
Can I make a motion? And then I'm in the recess after we're done.
You gotta make a motion here and.
I make a motion to go ahead and bid it out underneath the committee's procedures with the exception of A, having the city attorney look over this contract just to make sure that we're good. And B, to separate mowing and spraying as recommended by the public works director.
We have a motion moved by Lenzlo. Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Second by Cool.
Okay, so how do you vote? Through Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan? Rizlo?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yeah.
Calba?
No.
Okay, can we take a, we're gonna smash it.
Okay, Neil Cook, uh, council number Lenzlo, ask for the fight.
Okay.
Thank you, committee, cemetery committee, for your work on that.
We'll take you back over there.
Okay, alright. I wonder if that is a presentation.
There's like.
Yeah, the, where someone wins.
So, third, granted.
We're twenty two.
And you're in the north, North Grove Cemetery.
Solar has the, they're up the window. That's what I told him in COVID, like, I'm getting bored. I'm getting bored. I was every night, it's like.
I would mention, you know, with the rack. Oh, okay. And I was gonna ask you, um, what you, your thousand, yeah, we know.
Showed. So, that's why I just. So you're a lot of time. There you go. You can sign this. I'll take them with what's anywhere.
I did.
Only made us a comment and. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you. So that's a copy, so you're gonna take a look at. Okay, thanks.
Are you leaving?
See you tomorrow night?
Thank you guys.
Yes. Good, I'll be there.
Thank you. Well, I know, I wish we had your birthday on Facebook. That, that would be so good. Tony, you had that contract out there a bunch.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Or not Tony, Cory.
Yeah, but we didn't spray then. I know.
Did you have a contract, Cory?
Yes.
A written contract?
Yep, from the city. And I've asked where that's been. I asked, where's that contract at? And nobody can give me that answer.
There hasn't been one since he started, John started all of them.
And why?
Ask Jim, ask, ask Jim. We just had almost been a year, last couple, three years. Ask Jim where the contract's.
Yeah, actually, that contract was like, it was that thick. It was, it was a big contract. But it's tall.
Probably just an generic contract.
But, I mean, we had to carry a million, I had to carry a million dollars.
Um, does, does the sprayer have to carry a million dollars?
I was, I was supposed, I had, I had my license, I, I didn't vote, but I carried just one million, one sum.
For all?
For both, yeah, I didn't have to carry two million, just for.
That's if you're doing both.
Just one million in box.
If you're doing both. But if you're just doing the spray.
But one day I don't get to work from home.
You're, you're.
Should have, working from the city.
I don't think they ask that here. I just showed proof of insurance for one million dollars and I did, I didn't spray. We just mowed it that.
No, but I know what I'm asking you is have they split it? But someone hasn't had a really gone across.
You're probably two, yes, yes.
You'll have to have one too.
Yes. That would be my recommendation, yes.
Well, I think that's the way, we. That way you don't get people that are.
Don't open them.
I can't throw that ass.
I gotta throw it now.
Uh, uh, yeah. Since we're still waiting, we can hear one more time, sorry.
We need this, you know, boil that.
Not, there shouldn't be.
What are you doing?
Okay. James.
James Martin?
Yes.
Being paged up. Come to the audience.
Okay, Neil Cook. Sorry, move on to, uh, item number nine. Let you all assist him, go ahead.
At this time, I welcome the public hearing. Did you receive anything, Ash?
No, I didn't receive anything, any comment from the public? No comment.
Okay, close the public hearing. Okay, point two, oh, one C. Eighteen three.
Okay, we need a motion. Moved by Calba, second, seconded by. Lenzlo.
Okay, how do you vote? Through Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calba?
Yes. Okay, we need a motion to waive the second reading.
I'll move that.
Moved by Calba. Seconded by James.
How do you vote? Through Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calba?
Yes.
Need a motion to waive the third final?
Moved by Calba. Seconded by James.
How do you vote? Calba?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Do they have a list of the appointments for the commission or not? I can get here at all.
Oh, thanks. Uh, no, I don't think there was.
Did you have these?
No.
No, we just gave it, gave it to you.
Okay, they need, Rich, not for these people to see that we wanted to go back on the commission. And, uh, historic preservation commission, Katie Cranks, that she would, planning and voting commission, Chris Sabrazzi, Marty Wells, Alfred Mendelson, and board of adjustment, Larnady Christensen and Suzie Belles, Richard Welland, Gianna. I'd like to have a motion to appoint all these people.
Are these people that were already on them? They were already current? Okay, that's what I thought.
So is there a reason why we have to reappoint? Is, if they have to.
Oh, you just, you heard, not.
Alright, at the top.
Need a motion? Moved by Calba.
I'll second it.
Seconded by. Cool, seconded by Cool.
How do you vote? Through Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calba?
Yes.
Hey, Mick.
You have a power point for insurance?
Okay, we have representatives from town and county insurance and the county that, to speak.
Good. Ted Day, I brought Danielle down for what we were kind of country insurance and, uh, like, uh, offer our services to try to, uh, pull the city insurance this year and see if we can do any better on the price and, and, uh, keep the coverage, get it covered good. Our, the company we'd be pulling in with is ICAP. They would come and they can do inspections, they'll recommend, uh, anything on, on losses and things like that. Cause I think we can help track for that, so. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I can, should try to answer them.
They made the same.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, you were at the meeting, but you weren't, so, yeah. They, they, they offered to do the same thing for the utility side and they could allow you to submit proposals for our account.
When did we just renew with EMC?
No, it's, it expired in April first. So this is a time for the renewal. So if you'd like him to seek some information, we'd be back to us for the renewal, we need a motion.
And they would, they would do the same thing as Lauren does with EMC?
Supposedly.
I mean, do we have like?
Almost, almost there.
Yeah.
Yep, and that's, Ash, I think, is gonna give us a copy of the current policy so we can make sure we're not missing anything. Um, so we'd go to Apple for apples and then what we would do is go through the close, make sure all the coverages is where we think they should be.
Okay.
And then present to you.
And then that comes up in April, right?
Yeah. There's a little marsh, but I, I think it would be there. Marsh, would you be able to present it in marsh?
Um, we can sure do it, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I have talked with the.
True, yeah. It expires April first.
Okay.
Need a motion to allow them to?
I'll make the motion. I just think, you know, they, they keep getting great presentation of the utility board and I think it's, it's worth looking at. Pick and look at it and, uh, see what they offer.
Moved by Calba, seconded by James.
Okay, how do you vote? Through Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calba?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Bonnie Flydrun, who's wearing the deathly there?
Yeah, she is, and she's gonna speak.
Hello, I wanna first start by saying thank you for a terrific annual salary. It's kind of awkward when I sit in the audience. I just wanted to let you know that the, um, the Stewart revitalization, we're planning the Bonnie Flydrun again this year. It's gonna, we didn't have the last two years because of COVID, but we are on track. We're doing it this year. Um, we are planning it for April twenty third. We're gonna start in Dexter at the Dexter Museum and head to Whiteville Road and then over to Stewart and at the old, or the First National Bank downtown. Um, this year we are also gonna add a one mile run that starts, the race in deep, uh, in Dexter starts at eight to eleven, eleven o'clock. And then, um, at eleven thirty, we're gonna start a second fun run. It's just a mile starting at that bank through Stewart and then end, end up back at the bank. So I just wanted to, I guess, let you know what we were doing.
Um, do you know what your route is for the one mile in town?
Um, I do not.
Okay, that's fine.
I knew that's a good question. Um, Andy, Andy Kalenberg is one of my friends.
Oh, okay.
And he has told me with that.
Sure.
Yes, but I don't remember.
And he usually does the five K for the good eight days, so, yeah, he probably has a good route. And the route is the same as it was the first time, from Dexter over here?
Other than we're starting at the museum, other than the groundhouse, so.
Okay, not a real big change on that.
And I'm going to supervisor meetings this next couple of weeks to get everybody's okay to shut that, shut Whiteville Road down like we have in the past.
And we could probably be enlisting the help of maybe some county law enforcement, our city law enforcement, you know, pending the approval and all that. And I know the fire department helped out, uh, helped them block some roads and stuff for you on that first one.
The meeting tomorrow night, our committee, and then the next meeting, we're hoping to pull in with fire department.
Okay.
So my only thing is, I, I always tell everybody, I don't, it's always okay with me as long as you work with Dave and Jim. They'll, they can take care of it from there. They're not here, but I'm sure they will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I'd make a motion to you.
Moved by Calva. Seconded by James.
Okay, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you. While I'm up here, I also wanna say that, um, and I know you're all aware of this, right? I have not really approached you about this, is that we're trying to get money. We have about five thousand dollars now to, we originally were gonna do a car. Um, Bonnie Clyde car up at the Pocket Park. Um, we don't have money for that. The car was much more expensive than we thought. So we're, we're trying to get a sketch of that car and then have a fabricator cut it out of metal and put up there like right next to my office building. So kind of out of the way, but, but a car to fix the Bonnie Clyde, that's great. Okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What is going on with that building? Out of curiosity, do you know the Bonnie Clyde building?
Uh, it's been sold.
Okay, uh, thirteen, city attorney proposal. She fought the council's fight, the, people gave a pretty impressive resume here, but I have to speak. We have new council people on, and I've worked with her for a while for years, and I think she does fabulous job. He does tremendous hometown cleanups, Newtonson, the new house, Carl Chevrolet. She helped with the Bryant Fifth Monford property, the Clinton building. And birthday in two twenty-five, the new works in this two hundred, but she's real close in Gatwick. He has close ties with the police department up at courthouse, working on that, so I'd really like the council to take our consideration on switching attorneys at this point.
I'm just curious, is there a reason that we're, we're, I've been off for two years, but is there a reason why you're shopping elsewhere?
I think it's gonna shoot race.
Well, that's one reason. Uh, I think there's been an issue with, uh, the amount of time it takes to get stuff done. Unfortunately, being on the fire department, we had an issue trying to get a simple, uh, nonprofit setup. And it took us several thousand dollars and several years to get that set up. And there's been projects with the city since I've been on that have taken a while. There's been a few issues where there's been some stuff wrong in, in, in things.
Paying for it twice?
There's been, there's been just more issues than just the two twenty-five, you know? And here now, she's one attorney. We have, we have a firm that has three attorneys. Yeah, you know.
Four.
Four?
They just added, they added a fourth one, which is Mitch Kearns.
Okay.
So he's a local guy.
So we got four attorneys, so.
That is.
So.
Yes, brother.
I, I agree. I'm not saying she hasn't done good stuff for us. She has, but there are some additional issues that go on there. And there's, there comes a time where you have to look at how we're gonna, how we're gonna grow and how we're gonna proceed, you know?
And she's not gonna, I mean, she's good at what she does when it comes to code enforcement and delinquency. But sometimes you have to look at the broader picture and the other things that we have going on. And I don't think she's gonna be an attorney forever. I mean, she's getting up there in age and if you, you know, you wanna keep looking towards the future, you wanna. But she, she does wonderful when it comes to code enforcement. I mean, that is one thing that she is top dogged at, but we have other things like UTV, ATV, trees, s- speed cameras that we're waiting on Steve Brick, who just doesn't have time. And you don't really wanna spend four or five hundred dollars an hour for simple stuff like that to get done, where I think this firm is pretty versatile.
I agree.
In what they're doing.
No, I agree with that assessment. You know, you're just kind of feature boosting, you know, looking down the road, uh, bringing, bringing these guys on. They're gonna have a chance to, uh, start getting their feet wet with, with our, our issues that we have and we give to them, and then they can carry on that tradition hopefully, uh, and provide us with the service on here. You know, I looked through the resume and I was impressed too.
I think the only thing that we have to be cautious of is, if I am not mistaken, is Dwayne, the utilities attorney, John?
Yes.
Did you guys hire Dwayne?
Yes.
As your attorneys?
Yes.
Which it shouldn't ever be an issue, but.
You mean like?
Conflict wise.
The law says we won't have conflict with.
And I don't think it should ever be an issue. Normally, I mean, I don't see foresee utilities and the city going against each other or anything, but.
I don't have the other one here, but I know that, uh, it was mentioned that, uh, she charged per quarter hour maybe, or half?
Oh, she was charging.
Is there?
Three tenths versus, or five tenths versus six tenths. Normal attorney rates are six tenths.
Okay, 'cause I didn't know what the minimum, like, it's two hundred dollars an hour, is it, is it a one hour minimum?
So it's.
You know, for something that takes four seconds. That's what I was.
Right, and my.
Attorney's often bill in tenths of an hour or something.
Right, and she was billing point five instead of point six or something. I.
I, yeah, I remember reading that, I just didn't know.
I just punched the numbers in. I don't. I don't know necessarily how that works. So one tenth equals, is it, maybe I'm, one tenth equals five minutes or six minutes? Six minutes, that's what it was. So for every tenth of an hour, she was doing five minutes, not six minutes.
She was doing a twelve versus a ten.
Correct. There you go.
I don't think.
Which isn't much of a difference.
So a phone call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do we know that these guys aren't gonna do per, you know, per phone calls?
Well, they will. I'm sure. I don't know any attorney that wouldn't.
I think that's a standard.
Yes, that's it.
You know, that's not something that one does it.
Just.
Want their money, so.
Yeah, I did read that as well over the weekend and, I mean, are they? I guess Beverly knows our system. And, and I don't know. I mean, this is still learning for me, so I'm saying, if somebody else walks in here, is it gonna take them time to learn our system? If everybody already knows to, for the code enforcement part of it? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, your, your code's right there and they're gonna read it, and she probably has to revisit it. I'm sure she doesn't know it by heart. I mean, I don't know, it just depends on. It looks like these guys are.
It's not like they've.
Multiple cities.
Done city work before, so.
So they're gonna know the basics. I don't know.
So. I know you brought up, is it going to be on an hourly basis, strictly like if they work for half an hour, they're giving charge just for a full hour? So if we were to say, yes, we'd like to move forward with this firm, can we say pending clarification on it? Is, is that something we can do and then, or do we, or would we just table it until next week until we find out?
It's up to you, I think.
I, I don't think, I don't think they bill out, like, if you, if Ash tells them and says, or emails them and says, you know, I need X, Y, and Z, and it takes them ten minutes to look at it, they're not gonna bill you an hour for that. They're gonna bill you just the ask.
Well, well, see, that's what I'm.
Time, just like she does. So they're billing the same as Beverly.
Sure.
It's just that these guys may not take as much time or, you know, they have more resources, things of that sort. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
You know, you have more people working on maybe, yeah, it gets, that's nice.
Yeah.
I, I would hate to see him bill like, you work, maybe thirty-one minutes of work and say, well, you didn't pay a half hour. I, I just know that was a question, you know?
And I know that the older, the two guys that were billing this said they were two hundred an hour. I mean, if they delegate this to Mitch, he may be even cheaper because he's a young associate. But he also has been working with a lot of cities and I know that he's very involved with Dallas County. Stuff of that sort.
I guess the biggest downfall for me is, I haven't been on long enough to experience. Right. This one. So I'm just basing it on the mayor's and YouTube councilman. That, that's all I can base it on. So I, I mean, I don't have anything to.
It's a one-year contract, right?
Yeah, I mean, you, you're supposed to do a resolution every January on who you're turning.
Yeah, once you have it, you get it every year, evaluated.
I know James has been, James, you were on the council before. I don't know if you have any, uh, opinion on that. I mean, like I said, I know it's, she, she was good at stuff, you know? There was just some issues with time taking and, and stuff like that, but I didn't know if you had against them.
No, that's what I was really asking, this, uh, first of all. I don't feel that I would vote to change figures right now.
My, my figure of account was that a bigger firm is necessary than when you're gonna get it done correctly on time. We've got a issue, well, now with Steve Rick, who's been sitting on the table for three or four months now, the ATV. Cameron. And one, one other.
It's the trees.
The trees.
But when you run into a bigger firm like that with Steve, you're paying more an hour and he, he's very busy and that's why we use him only for special projects.
And he may have other bigger matters to address rather than just. A tree issue or an ATV issue.
This firm, I think, is the same size as Beverly's. I think Beverly's losing a partner, I think I just saw, but, um, I think they're the same size, but the city has jumped around. I mean, people complain all the time. They go, they bump Marley. Uh, we've never been, you guys haven't nev- heard, Warren's never been the city attorney in the past?
It's worth it.
I feel, well, they've, there's been a lot of attorneys that I think a people complain about, you know, you use this one and this one and this one, you can't keep it straight. So, I mean, maybe it's just something we table till next month and it gives people time to think about it.
Well, if you take, I would like Paul Corley put in a, basically, this person, all the city, which he has represented over the years. She's very knowledgeable. It's up to the county.
I'm, I'm not saying that she's not knowledgeable, 'cause she's very good at what she does.
Right, that's.
But the issues are like, one, one particular instance is, we did some stuff with All Saints out here at the church and it didn't get done right, and so we had to do it a second time, and so it took twice as much time and twice as much money. Because of a error on that end for me, the way things were made. And it happens, I get it, but.
Would you guys be able to table that?
Yeah, I.
I, I mean, okay, I can table and make some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Four table, the resolution number twenty-three oh seven C.
The county approved it, right?
I'm gonna move that.
Moved by Calva.
I'll second.
Seconded by Coolie.
Okay, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Okay, fifteen, number twenty-two, oh wait, C. Setting a date, and that'll be the March meeting again?
Yes, sir. March fourteen.
Fourteen.
This isn't the, the second grant that he's looking at, right? This is the first part of it?
This is the, for the TIF.
Okay, so it was for the first part, not the second?
This is just the city can fulfill its agreement with the original catalyst grant.
So you just need a motion for the date, right?
We've got a motion to just set a date for what we keep.
Motion.
Moved by Calva, seconded by James.
How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Okay.
Sixteen.
C, resolution number twenty-two oh nine C, again, setting a date, March fourteen.
Same thing, that's for the store. Moved by Calva, so, seconded by James.
How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Seventeen, condition technology equipment policy.
This kinda, because of all you see with the technology around you now and all the info we give on this, so we worked on this, uh, policy to kind of just set things. You're good with it, we need a motion.
Moved by James.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, just go. Um, I know you and I have talked and I might have missed it because I had a little sleep issue over the weekend, but I tried to bring it through as much, but, uh, we talked about limiting the, uh, uh, taking the technology home just to do stuff on it was only be taken home during, like, shutdowns for COVID and stuff. Is that in here or was that addressed?
Yes, kinda, you know, we put it in a form of ways that you only take it home if it's necessary. Sometimes if you're sick or something, we allow, you know, I allowed the manager sick last week. Not sick, he was exposed to COVID, so I allowed him to work from home. You know, I was sick last month and I worked from home. So we're trying to kind of keep it to the point that, yeah, if you're sick or you, supervisor allow you, yes, you can.
So like if you're, if you're gonna be gone for like a few days, 'cause just missing a few days of work, you know? When we were working in Des Moines, I didn't bring my stuff, you know, so, but it's just more, just as long as I, 'cause I know we visited with that and, and, you know, that was kind of what it needed to be, uh, on there and it seems covered it, like I said.
Yeah, I, I kinda, I feel like, it looks good, it looked good to me, but we can always change anything on it, if you wanna change.
So even if we approve it?
If you approve it, tonight, I think it's once we wanna add.
Come back to that, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Did it get motioned?
Yeah, moved by James.
I'll second, you second, I'll second.
Can I ask a question real quick? It says City of Stewart and Stewart Minus Bill.
Yes.
You guys approved that on last Thursday?
The, we'll approve it in the next.
At their next meeting?
March, yeah. Always our policies is.
Right, I just, it says both, so I wanna make sure that their board has seen it.
Yes.
So we have a motion in as.
Moved by James, seconded by Calva.
Okay, so how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Okay, eighteen, reason twelve, council government contribution.
We usually give them a thousand dollar contribution every year to the last thing, which they do.
Okay.
It's okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Coolie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave.
Okay, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Okay, nineteen, looking obviously, you got one last?
Matt is here, he's got a talk.
Okay. Now I can, I had some of this included in your packets, but, uh, I apologize for my punctuation and grammar. I have like rushed to get it all into packets. All right, I'm gonna start with, um.
I do for.
Kind of six program. Okay, now some of you may know, Kristen, the prior economic development director, had applied for and was awarded a federal grant named Safe Ross School for the construction of a sidewalk in one of these second. In order to receive federal funds, all recipients of federal funds must comply with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Troy Schroeder of the Iowa DOT performed a review of their records and he states that the City of Stewart may not have enough dated Title Six documents on file. Uh, Troy stated that Title Six documents must be updated every five years or whenever there is a change in mayor or chair. The Title Six documents are required as a condition of receiving federal grant funds. In the packet, you should have the Title Six letter to the local public agency, Title Six nondiscrimination agreement and Title Six nondiscrimination assurances from the US DOT. US DOT. If you and the city council agree to move forward with the project and receiving federal grants, the council will need to make a motion to appoint me. Matt Huggs is an economic development director as the Title Six coordinator and approved to have both Title Six nondiscrimination documents approved and signed by the mayor or Ash. Also, I have received an email from Tracy Bradley of the Iowa DOT, which I put in the packet there. She is informing that the city will need to comply with the Title Six onsite compliance visit and she will be contacting us for that.
So we're just, I, I'm gonna make a motion that we update the documents to Matt Huggs with the Title Six.
Moved by Calba. Seconded by James.
Okay, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Calba?
Yes.
Okay, V.
Okay. Uh, streetlights. Members of SEED have brought to my attention that back in June eighteenth of twenty twenty, that the street lamp designs and layouts for the All Saints Edition were in the planning process. Uh, SEED requested to have two Cobra-type lamps mounted on metal poles and installed along a central portion of All Saints Drive between Front Street and Northeast Second. I have reached out to Andy Coob of GGR Engineering as they were the engineering firm that handled the street lamp portion of the All Streets Edition. I asked Andy to see about getting two Cobra-type street lamps. Uh, estimates on those, he came, they came out to seventeen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars. Uh, I informed SEED members that I had painted an estimate for the installation uh, at seventeen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars. After some conversation amongst SEED members, they have collectively agreed to reduce the number down to one. And they've asked me to come before you to ask for, to have a street lamp installed from Front Street and North East Second and to uh, create a, pay for other contingency funds.
So this is a stupid question, but can our utilities put a light up?
Uh, they paid you offer to give two lights for free. But I think what SEED wants is to put the metal lighting still the wood.
Yeah, so there was no original lighting on that street when the street was planned, is that correct? When it was, when it was originally planned, did they, did they put lighting in?
No, that particular street was uh, before it was active All Saints Edition.
And it was just lights at either end, right?
Yes.
What I'm asking is if we hurt it, our utilities can't put in those light poles? Instead of contracting it out? That's why I'm asking, I don't know.
I, I wanna make a comment as before, you know, I spoke to Matt about it, you kind of, manage just resent for the SEED request and stuff. Uh, the, the, the project that he just mentioned on the biggest item, Safe Ross School. Uh, we have allocated the contingency fund to that project. So I spoke to Matt and I showed him that so far the contingency is one hundred twenty-one twenty-five. Well, it has been a hundred thousand so far between the match of the brand and the engineering fees and we haven't done anything yet, so we haven't even started the logic. So the contingency fund is already earmarked for the Safe Ross School. And that's what it put us into that dilemma of to, what to do? It was suggested that he will move that request to the next phase is for, to be included in the financial phase four. I think what I heard is there were mutual agreement to okay that they just wanted to bring it to the council attention. So.
My question is, is why can't utilities put in the pole? So we're not.
And electricity.
Why, yeah, why, why can't we ask our utility department to put the pole up?
He did ask them and he offered to put two homes up, but it's a wood, wood, not metal.
So if we incur the cost of.
Yeah, what's, what's the price of buying these nicer poles and having someone else install them, right?
Seventeen thousand.
What's the difference of us paying for the materials and having our utility department install them instead of using a separate contractor? That's what I'm asking.
I don't know.
That's what I was.
I don't know what, if that would be an option. I spoke with Pat and he suggested to contact Andy Coob.
Okay, so they're not interested in putting them up?
So a big chunk a, a big chunk of the cost is shipping and metal post, the metal, the, the whole.
Pole?
No, it was suggested to move it to the phase four to be included in the finance.
But we're not even close on phase four.
You have, Safe Ross School, you can take money from there, but when it is that gonna leave the Safe Ross School?
Right, you don't wanna take money from something that's already in the works.
Or, I believe Matt had told me, now, they, they had offered to put up a wooden pole, okay? So the thing, I believe SEED is saying it's a safety issue. Okay, it is dark out there, so I'll give them that, you know, it's, it's dark in between each intersection on every street, so you could say it's a safety issue in every street, okay? But to alleviate that, if we put up a wooden pole, until we got to phase four, then we've eliminated the safety issue. It's not gonna look pretty for right now, but then that gets us closer to moving into phase four and, and hopefully have, and doing the funding in that.
Well, then if you're ordering a bigger load of lights at that point.
Exactly, yeah.
It might, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's what I think I would suggest too, just give the fleet the wood bowl at his head. Until we go to phase four and get.
I mean, I, I wanna have a nice metal pole out there too.
Yes.
Do you need a motion please?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go with three poles from the county using.
Utilities are gonna do it.
Uh, in the meantime, and then essentially move these poles into the base.
Okay, moved by Dave.
Second.
Seconded by Calba.
Okay, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Calba?
Yes.
Dolly, please?
C.
Okay, I would like to move forward the leadership program. And then uh, put my report.
Was SEED just informational, your report?
Pretty much.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay, um. Uh, back in the summer of twenty twenty-one, one of my goals when applying for this career opportunity as the Stewart Economic Development Director was and is to build up leaders in our community, as I believe that building and helping to develop leaders in our community will strengthen our community and give confidence to individuals to participate in leading community functions, activities, assist and buddy entrepreneurs with the confidence to start and own their own businesses. Also, back in October, Midwest Partnership sponsored Karen Barley, Maggie Armstrong and I to attend a rural leadership program conducted by the Iowa Economic Development Authority and administered by the Center for Rural Revitalization. The Rural Leadership Program provided training, mentorship and funding to rural communities and regions initiating leadership programs. This program is a result of the Governor's Empower Rural Iowa Initiative. Uh, if Iowa wants rural communities to survive and thrive, it will take strong local leadership. Many rural communities have created effective leadership programs and have various Iowa industries leveraging these efforts. As examples and partners, this program targets rural communities who want to start a local leadership program and work to engage participants in community leadership roles. Uh, I am grateful to be able to take the opportunity to partner with Karen Barley and Maggie Armstrong and to gain knowledge and information alone with utilizing the resources available to me to get a leadership program for our community. One of the requirements of the grant to be accepted in the rural leadership program was for the grantees to have a program description and background. Our small group collectively agreed to create a two-phase leadership development program. The first phase will utilize the proven Toastmasters International Curriculum, which provides a supportive environment for building communication and leadership skills. The second phase will be modeled after successful programs in our, in other communities across Iowa. Participants will learn about local governments and nonprofit organizations and how they might use their enhanced skills to help lead those organizations. The mayor provided a letter of support for our application last fall. First, I am asking the city council to support this program. Second, to consider offering this program to the City of Stewart staff, the mayor and city council members, especially at this time with Midwest Partnership providing funds along with Economic Development providing national grant funds. There is a one-time membership fee of ten dollars reduced from twenty dollars thanks to Iowa Economic Development Grant Funding plus a six-month membership fee of thirty-five dollars reduced from fifty dollars thanks to the Midwest Partnership sponsorship. And then employers are encouraged to fund the member cost as a workplace benefit and investment in the employee. Do you have any questions regarding the leadership program? I invited Karen Barley to come up and explain some of them if you have questions.
So, first of all, it's thirty-five dollars every six months, right? So seventy dollars a year for one member?
Actually, forty-five for this for six months.
Forty-five.
The usual cost for one year is a hundred dollars, fifty dollars per six months.
I, I was just confused by the six-month membership fee is like, is that being current, but so?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yeah. And I look at it as a tremendous opportunity. I've been a member of Toastmasters for about twenty years. When I was working in Des Moines, it was offered by my employer. And it's, the return on this investment is really strong. And that's why a lot of big employers do offer it. It's typically not available in a small town, so I'm really excited that we can bring this to the Derrick County County. So it'll be not just Stewart, but Phillip County.
So I note down here it said, um, for us to support the program, which is something I, I, I would do um, personally, um, to City of Stewart staff, mayors and council members, is there any, any other qualifications or if, if like we all want to be part of it, I mean, there's you know what I'm saying? Do we have to, we have to develop a program here to say, this is how you get on it, this is what you got to do to qualify for it for us? Or?
Uh, that, I think the other direction for the community, I appreciate that. For the council member, we have the Leadership Academy that you go to and most of you went to that Leadership Academy that the city paid.
Right.
So that's, we need to know that, that you have more focus program to you as a leadership within town from the Iowa Economic Department. We have that design for you. The city employees to go to certain training twice a year for this particular stuff. So the, the, the city employees and the council has, has been taken care of with our program that's set for you by Iowa Economic Department. Uh, for the community, I think it's a great opportunity for the community to build that kind of leadership and all this. I just wanna mention your part of it as a council member uh, and city staff and mayor.
And the only reason I was asking is it said to offer the program to the City of Stewart staff.
Yeah, they trying to expand the process and I appreciate that. I just want you to know that you have a program designed for you as a council member, you go to, you know? And city staff has programs to go to twice a year, more progress on them as a city employees and more progress on you as a council. But their program is for the county, why, you know?
Their program is for more.
Businesses and all that stuff, so that's, that's the difference really that I wanted to bring up to you so you know that it's not focusing on you really, but they trying to include you.
Yes, it's available to the private sector, but this is an invitation to invite the city employees as well. And then also their program, it's uh, our group can be meeting twice a month. And so it's an ongoing training and an opportunity to participate. And I am asking for support, this is a fee to me, I'm doing this to benefit our community. I've reached to other members of the community, so at least I'm asking for the fees that I would have to pay to be.
So you're, with the fees that are in here, not for us to pay for the private sector people that want to sign up? It's just for you, okay?
Right, right, right.
Okay.
But then I would not be, you know, the invitation is out there for everyone else if they invite you to participate.
So we're not really asking for your membership fees?
That as well.
And I would like to put in a plug for the program for everybody, even though as I said, to get specialized training. This communication training is useful in so many settings. And Toastmasters is not just about giving a prepared speech, it's about extemporaneous speaking. It's about facilitating meetings, it's about customer service, all these daily interactions. It's also, I think, unique and valuable in that we don't go to a meeting and be told how to communicate. Toastmasters is very much learning by doing. So at every meeting, every member gets a chance to participate. To really build those skills every time. And it's fun, I, I, I wouldn't keep going if it weren't so much fun.
So, personally, yeah.
Also, this is not, if you'd like to, it's like, you know, if you're a regular full-time job, this is an opportunity that for the, those of you, if you, even though you work in Des Moines, you, some of your employers there would be possibly interested in sponsoring the program as well. So, those, both federal employees, principal employees, and all of that. So some of them are pretty good sponsors of this kind of program.
I, I, I personally think it's a, it's a worthwhile endeavor for you to get into Matt and partner together. Um, I would make a motion that we do pay his fees.
Yes.
Uh, for this endeavor, uh, to get it off the ground and best and support it in any way you can.
Moved by Calba to pay for registration of Matt, that program, seconded by James.
Okay, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rizlo?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Calba?
Yes.
Thank you, man.
Thank you. So, uh, I know this is on YouTube, so I'm asking if anybody in the public uh, would like any more information regarding uh, this leadership program? To contact me and so it's available.
I have one more thing for you. On your report, number five, you talk about the DMAC satellite location, which I think is very amazing that you have taken the time to reach out to them. Are you also working with the school at all to help move that along?
Yes, uh, that was, has been brought up, they had a SEED meeting with Rusty Shoffley and so.
Is Mr. Lozey involved in that also?
Not at this moment, at this time, but that's one of the ones that we're going to be reaching out to. So, uh, the initial conversation with Mr. Shoffley, that was positive. Sorry.
I adds that to you, cause Midwest Partnership's involved here. And what we're looking at is, at this point, we're first reaching out to businesses because when we met with President Dempson, he said, we wanna know what specific career opportunities and training would be most appropriate for your region. And then we, we're gonna put that list together and then connect with five school districts because DMAC requires either a hundred and twenty students or collaboration of school districts.
No, I think it's amazing.
I agree.
Thank you, man.
So I, you know, I don't know if you'd like me to go over anything else on the, the report there? The numbers on the All Saints Editions?
Yeah, no, they should. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Matt.
Okay, move on to the next slide.
Forty, Andy Forsh, does he there?
Yes, he's coming to speak.
Hi, Andy.
Good evening. Andy Forsh, representing my business, I probably would push in here to currently.
Currently closed down because of violations. And I came to the October meeting seeking or explaining where the direction I was taking my business, switching directions and had building, most of the purchase. I wasn't on that agenda. I spoke with the public forum. I was told that by following month date and received a letter, I had thirty days to close before I could get out of my shop, which was kind of unreasonable. So since then, it, I did come to the meeting, tried to explain, didn't really get a chance to come up to the podium and explain, but, but basically in October, when I was here, I explained how I had a lot of moving parts to switching directions. I had the lot that I bought. You know, I bought it in 2018. I didn't have money to put, but I bought the lot to show the council that I invested in. You know, my garage isn't my endgame. I'm not trying to delay. I'm not trying to do any of that stuff. But since then, since October, November, things have moved along. I've got an appointment for an appraiser, trying to find one that's a little bit sooner. The property owner's on board. I've spoken to the bank. Once I get that appraisal, I'll probably be hopefully at next month's meeting, fill out my tip papers. I spoke with Matt previous months before. So I'll get to that. Once I get an agreement somewhere, I'm going to know that a commercial appraisal is very expensive, but, and just finding one in general, like everybody does residential appraisals, but commercial appraisals are pretty hard to find. Just basically seeking time, I guess, seeking a motion to let the council, let me work for another ninety days while I get this sorted out. Like I said, I've got my financial situation kind of in order. I've got, I've got a meeting with the lawyer this week to finalize my lot sale. I've got the buyer on board, his banks on board, and just a lot of moving parts for me to get to that point. It wasn't anything that I could achieve in the time that was set for it, but I mean, I continued to work towards that, so.
This is a communicating property?
Yeah, yeah. Two oh three South List, Second Street, so, you know. So just, I, I need time to, you know, I'm operating and I need time to work and continue to bring in money and, you know, I have a plan, I have a direction. It's just, like I said before, I have deep pockets and I'm working towards there, so.
I would like to crack on this, Andy. We, we've got new people here. This started in 2017. You said, well, I never started a business in a residential area. Every year after, you come to get an extension. In nine, ten of eighteen, you said you bought with them and you were informed to talk to Jason and Als about commercial administrator, about your building plans. That never happened.
Yes.
Six, thirty, two thousand nineteen, different messages were sent to you, no answer. Seven, eight, two thousand fourteen, you come and got another extension. Seven, twenty-one, two thousand twenty, you got a notice from Ed Liedem, one compliance. Eight, ten, two thousand twenty, was made a motion to give you a full extension to do that. Eight, twenty, twenty-one, it's been up, it's been four years and six months this has been going on. I've got people running commercial businesses to say, you're running a business out of a residential, not paying for mortal taxes, electric, sewer, water, and you know that you were supposed to contact Beverly White. She let, sent you a notice and said, this is out of council hands. You're supposed to be dealing correctly with Beverly on this issue. She said, you know, this is clear back in December, January. I've talked with the owner of the building, no appraisal, I've been, but.
You've talked to him, but he never talked to me?
And the problem is, if this was in a residential area next to Dean Dolery or James Morgan, the brand new homes, this wouldn't ever, ever lasted four years. Tyson Greenwald started his business and Mick Asher moved with enforcement person, but then a few months, he was out there to build a brand new building on the east side of the plant. I, I believe at this time, we gave him plenty of time, Andy. And I've noticed the public business got down. From this weekend till today, there's different vehicles that are at the property now. There's a red vehicle that wasn't there now. Then you say you want a new vehicle?
That's my brother's truck, my brother that works for me. He drives a red pickup.
He said that's his brother's truck.
So I came in October and told you exactly what I was going to do and told you I had a lot to achieve and I knew what I needed to do. I've talked with Matt, I know what I need to do. I, I can't exactly, like what I told you in October, the property owner was in the middle of harvest. He runs a massive farm. His name's Lance Kaden. I'm not going to bark at him to hurry up because they cooks in a hurry. These people need time to do their jobs. I had to get my finances in order. I'm just here tonight to tell you that I'm getting close and I just need ninety days to work and it'll happen. This, this is how I put food on my table.
The one thing I have is the TIF part of this. I think we have shut down proposals, is it once a year that we consider TIF?
When was it? I don't know. I, I, and I think, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you may have spoken with Brian in the past about some TIF opportunities.
I just, I just spoke with Brian, I don't know, it was a week or so ago, to ask him for help on filling it out, about should, should do.
And, and I think even before we had made the change, we had, that had been brought to you. And I, and I know we, we had talked about this in October meeting about this and it kind of got left up in Beverly's hand, and I don't know about anybody else, but I have, I have not had any communication from her on what's been going on, you know, even though it's out of our hands. It, I think it would have been better for the council also to know, this, this is what's going on, you know? This is the letter being sent out, you know? We can, we still have to let her do what she's doing.
Yeah, and I, I came to the November meeting, I was on the agenda, and I basically like, I got shut down before I even got out of my seat to.
I just wanted to clarify that the TIF part of it.
Sure.
Is only considered once a year. And I, I think, yeah, I think if I'm, if I remember right, we shut it down and we do all proposals once a year, right? Am I remembering this correctly?
Yeah.
That's the only part I wanted to clarify.
So, so yeah, right now at this point, I have an appointment with Riley Appraisal to come out and do it, and I'm talking with Marty at the bank. That was somebody, he represented their earliest opportunities, April first to come out and move the building. I reached out to another guy that only did residential, he even two recommendations that I'm going to try to track down this week to see if I can get that soon. But these people all have jobs. I, I'm relying on a, a bunch of other people to do their jobs in order for me to get what I need to be, so.
Hopefully, obviously, we don't, we don't give them a chance until we are, until these everything is ready, if not possible.
Yeah, would be possible.
And would, and you and I talked, you know, we spent a few hours talking, and we did discuss the fact, you know, that this kind of has been an ongoing thing, you know? And I, I definitely don't want to see a locally owned business be shut down. We're kind of at a point where there, there has been chances. There's been opportunities, okay? My thing would be is with council, you know, it would have to be approved by council, I guess, to do this. What if this stuff didn't come to fruition? Like, what if this April thing didn't happen? And, you know, where's, where's the absolute cutoff?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of why I picked the ninety day thing, because with the appraiser telling me the soonest he can come is April first, and I told him to pardon me down there and if anything comes out, if it comes out sooner.
There's the fourteenth, so there's fourteen days to the end of February.
Yeah.
Thirty-one in March, right? There's forty-five.
We're talking the May, maybe, right?
What's that?
Three, ninety days, three to four, maybe.
Right, yeah, and it, and it, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, you got forty-five days until it's supposed to come out, but if they reschedule again?
Yeah, or if I find somebody else. I'm, I'm, I still would like to find somebody else. Like I said, to find a commercial real estate appraiser, that's probably coming by.
Would there be an appetite, whatever the timeframe is, if an appraisal was, if there's like a one commitment letter, just something you can show, where you can see it's moving in, not closing the hearing.
I mean, essentially, at the point where I have the appraisal, is it, I'd have to work through the bank or I'll have to pay for the appraisal twice, basically. So with working with Marty and trying to work with somebody that they work with, at that point, then I can glance and I can sit down and say, okay, what do you want dollars? And then I can, if I can't, if I can't help it, if they receive it, then I'll, if I can't, then I'll just move forward with what I have, so.
My question is, if it's this deep into legal, where we at?
I think we're so much. Deep into legal, as Beverly's just been sending, they've been communicating back and forth, and we've just, we've just kind of left it between Andy and Beverly to take care of.
See, and that's, and that's it. I don't have words to add in the process.
I don't know either.
And, and you see, that's kind of, that's why I was kind of, even though we've given to her that maybe we got, hey, this is what, this is going out, you know? We're not, we're not influencing on what she does, she just does what she does, I don't know. You said she closed, closed it due to, did you get something from her that says?
She sent me an email, basically said, I need to close or be moved by February first. So I closed.
Or there was, there was fines involved, correct?
Yeah, well, she threatened in October to fuck me, and then I came to the meeting.
And except those fines, so this is what got confusing for me, because I was talking, you know, we gave them some time, it's like, but what about those fines?
So we saw the letter, you know, that she sent in October with fines. I remember because she, it was forwarded through an email to all council.
Right.
I do remember that. Anything after that, I do remember Dick saying something about you had till January to get closed on the wholesale.
Yeah.
And I lost it from there. I mean, I don't know. I mean.
That's, that's just it, you know?
I don't know how it happened.
Where we at with the fines, is it going to be?
How to follow.
And I think. I think you need to come to, you want to finish that issue.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm here to do.
As a, I, I understand your position, I'm not disputing your position, but you have to see their position too as a council member, so you want to come to a home that. How about the ninety days, after the ninety days, what's going to happen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I set the ninety days. I don't, I'm basically telling you I can get this done in ninety days.
So if it's all done by the ninety days, that's very much what I see the council trying to.
Well, I think it's going to have to be without TIF until.
Yeah.
And TIF is the foundation.
Yeah, and there's the building, you know, in order for me to work it, you know, I've got quotes for paint booths, I've got quotes for, you know, concrete, because the existing shop spaces there, if I stuff a paint booth in there, I don't have a whole lot more room than what I got in my existing shop. So I've gotten quotes for concrete to place it outside the building, you know, put up three walls. I mean, there's going to be some upgrades that are going to have to happen to make that space work for my business. I mean, it's set up for an auction here, the, the ceiling has sound deadener hanging on it, looks like plum insulation.
And I think the other big confusion is the reason why everybody thinks, why Andy, it's the type of business in our code, am I correct? That's the issue. It's not the fact that he's running out of his house, it's the type of business.
It's a specifically.
Because in our code, it specifically says the auto money.
Yeah, auto money, stuff like that. So tough position here. I don't like being that, you don't like being, nobody else is going to like being in that. Again, the thing is, if, if the city, the council was to grant you the ninety days and it comes and it goes and you have nothing, then you're willing to take whatever consequences, shutting down, fines, whatever, after that date, happen to do that. Because, like I said, it's a, it's something's got to be done, it's got to, there's got to be a resolution at some point, good or bad, and I, I hope it's for the good part, you know, I would do. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. I'm, I'm still trying to convince myself that I should do it, but I don't know if a lot of people.
I get where the mayor is coming from, that granted, there's three of us that are brand new on here, and we don't know the whole four years of the past, sure you don't. But I'm a family man too, and you got a future, man. I'm willing to go maybe the thirty day, or the ninety days, sorry, and hopefully you can get that done, and we can just be over with.
I'm a little worried just with the, I mean, ninety days, can sell myself short, I guess. I'm just, I'm worried about the closing on happening.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if I, and that's what I, basically, if I can get an appraiser out here before April first, I'm definitely going to believe in, you know, I'll have days to spare, but, so, you know, because it can't, it can't.
I was thinking, I was like, six months. Yeah, I think actually, yeah, but at least get you a good chance, right?
Yeah. Would we, so you're saying the ninety days to close?
I'm a little worried about the ninety days, just the crazy break of that, it's based on what he's saying, just.
If they don't count, cancel on, if something comes up.
Well, and then you don't know what the banks, I mean, the bank delays and you've got all this other stuff and, I mean, you're going to have to get title opinions and stuff like that.
And that's, and that's where I was here in October, and then to come back and get it again in November was trying to explain how this stuff was going to take time, but it was just like all of a sudden, I get an email, it's like, you're, you do this now, thirty days to close, forty-five out of your options, finding it, then and now. It was like, I tried to explain this, like, I had this deal, I put on bags in this basket, this is my business, this is everything, true.
And that, that option would have been taken out of our hands at that point to, to do anything, it was given to Beverly to, to do that, or choose the one that's in the letter on that, so.
I guess, I still have my same question, is how deep is it into legal where can we even pull reins back on it?
I think it can be pulled back.
I think so.
Good.
I mean, I think it's just letters. It's not like we filed an action in the court.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just been letters that I know of, right, Ash? I mean, this city has not filed anything with.
No, she had to, only thing is, act the way we file, and we already delayed the one time in January, in the way to tell February. If the council wants to give him more time, that's their decision, but he's got to be truthful with Beverly. He's come to the council, he should have told Beverly what's going on before tonight. Because he has orders from Beverly. And my problem, Andy, is that this is four years and six months, and Brian mentioned the first time he gave you, he mentioned, he said, this is opening up a can of worms to somebody on code and went, well, why can't I get the four-year annual post treatment for extensions? And that's the reason we have to go to the court. I realize you have a family, or I know you're looking to the plant skating, and I hope it works out that you can go and get off, but time to time again, Brian had mentioned TIF fund for years, the revolving loan from the, from the utilities is available too.
But I can't just pay for my business with just TIF funds, this way, like, and, and I've come to the meetings and explained my position each one of those times, and, and it's not like this is a huge ongoing problem with all kinds of businesses at the time. Like, I'm here speaking and telling you exactly what's going on.
And right now, he's in compliance with her letter because his business is closed. So what I'm hearing is you would like to have the council grant you the opportunity to do business if, if we were to go with James's idea of six months.
It would make him eligible for TIF to get part of TIF too. That puts him into that pool.
Right.
So I want to make something clear, though, we're going to receive a lot of applications from.
No, I'm just saying, if six months, he could put his application to. No, I'm just saying, if six months, he could put his application to.
He could put it in. But we're gonna be evaluating those, and if I get all the applications back that we're sending out, we're probably gonna be limiting who gets them, or how much goes out.
So which, which is, that's our, that's our job to do that, you know, and, and see what's gonna benefit. But you are right too, you could apply to the work. But again, you're asking for permission to do business, to work, to work.
And finalize what?
To finalize the deal. I don't want to say we're doing six months, because we haven't voted on it for a certain timeframe, and then at the end of that timeframe, whatever remedy comes about, you're willing to accept that there will be no more extensions, there will be no more thirty days, sixty days, six months, period, it's gonna be done within that timeframe.
And maybe we could have updates, since I'm not the economic developer, not to put more on the play, but maybe just updates with Matt, instead of incurring legal costs.
Right, right, and, and I would encourage you to let Matt know, maybe send him some stuff.
I just, I don't want to keep incurring legal costs if we don't need to. If we're gonna grant an extension, and we want to make sure that he's still making progress, maybe our go-to can either be Matt or Ash, instead of Beverly, so we're not incurring legal costs.
The thing about that, I, I agree with Dick, I think she needs to know what's going on too, that's an informational.
But a quick email from Ash saying, I got an email, or I got an update from Andy, is a lot cheaper than an hour conversation Beverly may have with him.
Right, and, and I agree, but just so we're on the same page, that she should be let to know what's going on. But we're gonna, you know, you need to, I would say you would need to contact, we'll stay in contact with these guys, they need to stay in contact with us, so we, we're not in a position where we don't know you get this letter, we know where it's going on, and then, I know it's been a long time, I just, I, I just have that moral feeling of, you know, one last chance, and then you gotta understand that the answer to me, no, no, if, if you guys feel the same way, I think you just have to figure out a timeframe. I, I think six months would probably work, it's ambitious to run during the ninety days, it'd be great, you know, but, you know, you can also really hang yourself up by having a certain timeframe.
I'd rather six, six months than ninety days.
You know, so.
I, I don't want you to cut yourself short.
And just please don't make Toby into six months to.
No, yeah, I got something like that right now, so if I can get an appraisal sooner than April first, then I'm, I'm still gonna try to do that.
In, in fact, what I would, I'm, anybody else, I would say, if you, if you do this, then you are getting weekly communications to Matt and Ash, weekly, of what, something that's going on, you know, we need to see.
Biweekly?
Okay, biweekly, whatever, whatever, whatever your motion. So there's a lot in there, right?
Go ahead and say it again.
So it'd be a motion to allow Andy to do business for a period not to exceed six months from today, for the purpose of securing an appropriate location for his auto body shop, to have him provide biweekly updates to Ash and Matt Fong, to have Ash communicate appropriately with the council and Beverly while, I forget anything that I said, because I'm a short-term memory here, come on.
Should we add something to the template, have Beverly hold on for a cease, what is it, actions going on right now?
At this point, we have Beverly cease any further action. Should this not be completed within that six months?
Closed.
Closed, however you want to put it, as long as it's done. If it's not done, six months, then there will be no more extensions, no more grace periods, and you will abide by whatever consequences are at that time. I know, I just want to be sure, so at least we got it on, on recording here, you know, now? So, so you can, you can pull that off there. I, I would, I would move that for the majority.
Moved by Kalba, second by James.
Okay, how do you vote? For Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Kalba?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Last, last for you, two more.
Hello.
So in January, I received a code violation, which I asked for more information about, and was told that it was for sticks, plastic buckets, and my siding being burnt. So once I pointed out, he said that he wanted me to have the house power washed, right before we had the big snowstorm, which I, I basically was like, am I supposed to encase my house in ice? Um, because of temperatures, and so they didn't give me until May first to have it washed. Um, my concern is that the siding is older, and so I don't know if, like, power washing is going to damage the siding, causing me more problems, that I'm a single mom, I can't afford to re-side or repaint the house. And, um, the plastic buckets in question are actually gardening containers that I use for the growing season. Um, this last year, I wasn't able to use them, because I had a lot of life issues going on with my mom passing. Um, sorry.
No, you're fine. I'll just speak for a second, okay? Just in the, the pictures that we're seeing here, obviously, I will agree with you, washing your siding in the middle of winter is probably not the best interest. I don't know if I would, mine house, just in the pictures here, you know, there, there's some, some brush out back.
I do have better pictures, and I have a burn pile in the backyard, which obviously, in the wintertime, I don't feel safe doing the burn pile.
Sure, it looks like maybe a car bumper.
Yeah, and I talked to Kenzies about if they would want to come out and get that, um, to have for their, it, we replaced my bumper, which I recently have sold my car, and so I was basically reaching out to Kenzies to see if they'd be able to pick that up.
Sure. I had a suggestion.
Okay.
Couple meetings ago, we had a citizen come up and offered his services to be bugged in these situations. And so far, he's gotten a couple calls for snow removal, stuff like that, and he's willing to do it free of charge. And just to remind, or to let the new people know, that was Mason Hasty. And he brought it to the council, gone, this is not, he is not sponsored by the city. He simply said that we could, if his name now, his name, there's phone numbers here at City Hall, if there are people that are facing situations like this, that may not have the ability to do it in detail, you know?
I did get like a snow Joe, like the small shovel type thing, to be able to, obviously, it's not going to clear six feet of snow, but.
Well, this, this might, it, it's more than just snow removal, but it's like maybe picking up the sticks in your yard, maybe at, at some point, helping with cleaning the siding on there, and.
And I even reached out to Max Ryan and asked him, I, I let him know that they were gardening containers, and, um, you know, where am I allowed to store them if I can't, they're right up against my house, and I do have better pictures than what's in the packet that I can share with everybody, um.
What about the pallets leaning up against your house? You use those for gardening too, or?
For what? Oh, no, I'm, I do, one of my neighbors is actually going to help me, there's, a, kind of like a branch tree has grown up through one of them, so I can't just like move it. And so when it's safe to be able to do a burn pile, she said that she'd be more than willing to help me move that to the burn pile, so that it could be taken care of.
Sure. So I know we had talked at one meeting about having to be more specific in these letters, and, and I don't want us to get involved a lot, but I think we owe it to our constituents out there to kind of find out, we were, we were going to ask the code enforcement, you know, maybe to be more specific, now, he does say siding, dirty, backyard debris, you know, he brought up pallets and stuff, you know, is, is there some way that, you know, have, have, do we have a conversation, you know, if anybody talked to him at all?
Yeah, I know did, I know did.
And was he going to start being more specific in it?
I think the man was working on that, kinda, uh, am I right?
Yeah, yes, and like, say, what I feel is the pallets, they can even move work, or with two dollars a foot percent sticker, the same way with the bumper, if you get a sticker from the mini A-Wood, yeah, on your garbage day, and it'd be out of there.
So I see the garbage part of it, that's fine, but now that we're getting kind of dirty siding, I mean, there's people in town that have stuff falling off of their house.
And that was my concern too, Christina, was the dirty siding, I agree with that, it's like.
That's a bit much.
It, it says, the exterior. You can't, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, it says exterior needs to be maintained in good repair, structurally sound, and sanitary. Now, siding is gonna get dirty, I mean, when, when does it become a code violation? For, when, when does it, I don't know, is that?
If there's cracks in it, or big chunks missing, I see one thing, but if it's being dirt, I don't know, dirty.
It's supposed to be the north side of, ten percent, twenty-five percent of the house is probably dirty.
It's, it's, it's typical, typical dirty siding, you know, I mean, that's.
And I mean, it was more dirty at the time I got the other thing, but, um, we had some rain, and of course, it washed some of that dirtiness away, so I mean, it's not, I don't feel it's to the point where it needs to be power washed, per se.
I don't, I mean, we, we did code enforcement for a long time, this obviously wasn't ours, but I can't think of a single time where anybody's ever concerned a violation for dirty siding.
What did you get, what's that, Ray? That, that is, that is, it's, it says in this letter, IMPC Sections three oh four point one general. Now, that is obviously not a city code, because he has city code section just above that. So whatever, whatever code he pulled us out of, I don't know where it comes from, says the exterior structure shall be maintained, that, it's some code, but I don't know where he got it from, so, uh, on there. I don't think in our code, it specifically mentions, um, that, in our code, it says whatever's dangerous to health, I'm not sure dirty siding is, I mean, I suppose it could at some point, but indecent, I don't call it dirty siding, or unreasonably offensive to the census. Personally, I would not view dirty siding as being offensive to, because siding gets dirty. It's on the elements, every day, you know? What if it gets hit by hail, and you got little, little, you know, it's not cracked off, but is that gonna be offensive? There's, that, it's, it's, and that was my concern, I, I don't, I'm not trying to tell the guy how to jump, but it's like, what is your reasoning behind some of these? We, we just had one recently, where somebody got, got a letter for toys in their yard, you know? He felt there was too many toys, well, you know?
So Mrs. Guthrie, let me ask you, what are you asking of the city?
Um, well, I don't feel that my gardening containers are debris. And I do, I know that they have faded, I have had them for about four or so years. I do plan on, not in the wintertime, but I do plan on spray painting them, um, so that they do not look faded.
So you're asking for some time to get some of this stuff done?
Yes.
Some outside stuff?
For like, when it's, I like to have a garden hose when I'm burning things.
No, I understand that, I, I do understand, um, so, I would feel, I would feel okay with, with, you know, granting her some time, you know, until, I guess it's spring, but I would also like to get her Mason Hasty's number, um, so she can contact him, and he might be able to come over and help, uh, pick up some of the sticks and stuff, or the pallets even.
That would be great, because I do have stuff performed by my alda, and so there's some days that I can't really get out of bed, because I just, I'm in so much pain, I can't even hardly walk.
Didn't you say that you had until May first?
They, he gave me until, that I had until May first to have the siding power washed, and that, um, the debris needed to be cleaned up within ten days, or the city was going to come out and take care of it, and charge me, and then charge extra fees on top of that.
Let's just, let's just make it all May first.
And can we get rid of the dirt and siding?
What's that?
I mean, are we really gonna consider, I, in, in looking at this list that we just got, she's not the only one that they're saying, face of siding, windows.
Yeah, it's like, with the windows, are you looking at what, what's the cutoff date for windows, what's, what is that?
Not, everybody can just go replace all this stuff.
I mean, the windows are not rushing, I mean, yeah, you're right.
I don't know, it's just maybe something to look at.
I agree with you, Christina, I, yeah, it's something that needs to be looked at, and go.
Yeah, it's a cool suggestion to have the whole thing done by me.
I, I like that, get her Mason Hasty's number also, okay, we'll get that, and can see if he says, let me call you. Or will you talk to me, or whatever, and I'll go with that, so.
You okay with that?
I'm fine, I'm fine with that, that's great.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we extend Mrs. Guthrie's date to have everything brought up as the code enforcement officer explained, to May first.
Okay, I need a second.
Are we gonna make a power washer siding?
Is the new motion including the power washer siding?
Let's, let's, let's try to make every attempt possible, to clean it, how's that? We'll do the best we can.
And maybe if power washing's not an option, you'll maybe just.
Just a, we'll see how best we can.
I think that's all it would take, is just hosing it down personally, I don't think it's too extreme, but it beats power wash personally.
Motion, pack it for now.
Moved by Kalba, second by.
Moved by Corey.
Kui, seconded by Kalba.
Okay, how do you vote, Chris Nathrey?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Lowly?
Yes.
Kalba?
Yes.
Okay, you got it, good motion.
Okay, we'll get to that number too, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next.
Police department is very hard there.
They have, he has you, and he's gonna speak?
Like, before Dave talked more to the council, that I haven't even talked today, this afternoon, that we had two problems at DuR, and the dispatch called me and said, your police officers need radios bad, because there's bad communication going on, and she was involved with it, and she said it's a terrible situation, not having the radios what they need for the personal protection, all that data.
Yeah, it does sound like you guys had a busy day.
Yeah, a little bit, so there's a, there's a set of letters, and then a set of blue pages for each of you in there. Um, I guess first, before we get into that, did anybody have any questions about the department update, or about January, the year's statistics? Okay, I know it's a long meeting, and everybody probably wants to get moving, um, did everybody have a chance to read? I hope so, that, the stuff that I included in the packet.
Look, that was pretty much stuff that we had generally talked about the last meeting, right? Kind of an overview of, uh, you talked about, you know, the incident out at the, at the yellow apartments and stuff.
So there was some history in there, and there was a, there was an example of our current equipment needs, but then there was also, uh, went into the American Rescue Plan, and, and all of that stuff.
Right, right.
So, um, essentially, after that last meeting, it was actually the next day, because Christina had mentioned the American Rescue, I think we had talked, we called it like the American Rescue Grant or something, but we had, we had talked about it. So I went looking, um, you know, figured out the American Rescue Plan, and started looking into the department, use Department of Treasury, and figuring out that we, as a city, we were gonna receive two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, we'd already received approximately a hundred and twenty-eight, we were in the first payment, we'd get a second payment coming up later. So I started to look into it, read the entire rulebook, or the guide that talks about what we can spend it on, and found out that a lot of the things that we currently need are allowable expenses to use that money for. need are allowable expenses to use that money for, a lot of the cities and counties around us are currently spending some of their portion of their, their, uh, American Rescue Plan money on those things, and so I came up with, like, went and got some quotes, and one of the reasons I couldn't get you these guys, these numbers until tonight was just the fact that, uh, the quotes literally, I had a week or so to, to get the quotes in place, and so I didn't get some of them until today, um, essentially, there's four real areas of concern with our department, one of them is the radios, um, our computer system is severely outdated, right now, since our last meeting, we were down to two laptops in our car, uh, since that meeting, we've, we've gone down to one, um, that laptop could, I haven't even gotten it quoted to see how much it would cost to fix, but essentially, these things are seven years old, they're on a three to five year life expectancy, there's moving parts inside, it's not all software related, um, these are built rugged, so they're even harder to repair and get into, um, you know, so we're past our life expectancy on those, the in-car cameras and the, the body cameras, um, it's a necessity in today's day and age in, in our police work, and then, you know, the cameras at the station, um, you know, when you buy something online or you do a child custody exchange, everybody says, go to the police station, that's a safe spot in town, that's where there's gonna be cameras, there's gonna be cops there, um, you know, we also have, uh, people that we bring in that are accused of crimes, we have people that are currently under arrest that we bring in there to interview, um, so having a, a camera system at the police station is super important, um, so I went and kinda got some quotes on what these things would cost, and then I kinda scheduled it into three different options that I would ask the council to consider, um, so if you go to page nine, would be the first option, and this would be to use, um, that state, that state local, uh, fiscal recovery fund money to go after that, all of our technology and communications, this would essentially give us a five to ten year plan where every single thing that we need technology wise and communication wise would be covered, now I understand that that's a steep, uh, price, and it's also probably a hard ask, because there's other departments that are gonna want some of this money, uh, and need some of this money to do their own projects, so I looked at option B, which I think is kind of the more, uh, doable and more fair, um, version, but essentially, we would use, what I would ask is that the, the council allows us to use the radio or to use the SLFR funds to purchase radios and computers, um, and then for our in-car video and body camera plus the, the station cameras, we would apply for the Guthrie County Foundation Grant, which is what we had talked about last month, um, I did talk to Susan, and obviously she can't make any guarantees, but I just kinda asked her, uh, her opinion on some of the numbers, and she thought that the, the amount that we would be asking for, that we'd be splitting with them, was a fair number, it was something reasonable that they've done in the past, uh, with other cities, so she thought it would have a high chance of being approved if we went that route, the benefit to plan B is, we were, option B is, we could have not only, um, you know, we have two different sources of funding, kind of paying for these things, but it also leaves more of that SLFR funds to other departments, other city, uh, departments that need it for other projects, and then finally, there's out, there's the, uh, option C, which, um, would be if we were to apply for the Guthrie, the Guthrie County Foundation Grant to cover fifty percent of the total cost of the program, um, I talked with her about that number, she told me that she felt that that would not be approved, I mean, obviously she can't guarantee that, but the number's high enough that it's, it's outside of the typical, um, award that they normally would give, and so we could ask for it, but we may not get it, and then we've got, you know, a square one, um, I would kinda put into some of those, those, uh, pros and cons into those last two pages, just to, uh, have you guys kind of look at and see, and I would be more than glad to answer any questions or discuss it further.
I have a question.
Sure.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, so I didn't think from our last meeting that the Guthrie County grant was an if, I thought it, it was a was, like, I was, we were gonna fill out the grant for the ready first.
Sure.
Was my understanding.
I was under the same impression.
Sure.
So, the other part is this, these American Rescue funds that we have now, last year we made a motion and it was a five to zero vote, that those funds be allocated to sewer and have Forest and.
Sewer utilities.
That's what we were granted the money for, but the motion was for Jim to come up with proposals with, or to work with at, or Forest on proposals to use that money for our city system, so I don't know that we can even use that money right now, I don't know how that works, because it was a five to zero vote, just putting that out there.
Sure.
I mean, I don't know if you remember that, but my other thing is, and I've had a lot of time to think about this over the weekend, is some of these things, I don't understand why we didn't visit them when we were buying cars and increasing wages two years ago and incurred a huge expense, why we weren't looking at updating computers in the vehicles as we purchased them.
So we, I, I mean, I can answer all those questions if, if those were it, I'm going back to the grant, um, I have the application here, it's filled out, one of the things we have to include in here is the, the financial record to the city, how much money's available in different, you know, accounts, those kind of things, um, I am not on their board, I don't have any idea what they look at, but I would assume that if I was on their board, one of the things I would look at is, do they have any money sitting here from the federal government that was designed to go towards these, these things, um, that would be a question I personally would have if I was on the board, um, the other part of this is, it's a fifty-fifty matching grant, so I need the city's, um, direction on what that total value is gonna be, because if I apply for this and just pick a number myself, and then say I get awarded and I come back to you guys a month later and say, hey, we got it, but I need the city to put down X amount of dollars, um, that may not happen, or you may not appreciate the number that I chose, so the way I look at it, when I gave, uh, when I was up at the, at the last meeting, talking about those radios, that was our bare bones essentials, um, if I'm gonna apply for a grant for something, I'm not gonna apply for the bare bones, I'm gonna apply for all of the radios that we need, so that radio request, um, that I would apply for would be more than what I had asked for in my budget proposal, and I'm not against applying for the grant for a portion of that, but I would at least need a decision to be made with your assistance, so that I know when I go apply for this grant, I know what dollar amount I'm applying for, and I know that the city council members are gonna back that decision, so that when we do get awarded, if we do, um, it's a for sure thing, uh, otherwise, you know, it's just kind of a shot in the dark and we're, we're hoping we get it, but we might not have the money, um, to put that fifty-fifty down on it.
And for me, the radios were just, that was like a non-vague, like that was just, I thought it was gonna happen.
Right.
Because that is a huge part, and I did that it's a safety thing, and I thought we were just gonna do the grant and move along and.
So, the, the deadline for that's March seventh, like I said, I have it here, it's all filled out except for, um, those certain, those certain questions that I'm gonna need the city to provide feedback on and the council members to agree on, on price, um, the other question, I don't recall what the question, I remember the last question, so the vehicles, these are things, um, I mean, if you look back until, it was kinda funny when we were up here talking about salaries, someone had provided a, a Stuart Harrell copy from literally the meeting that I took over as chief, and one of the things that I had said, I don't know, I can't quote it, but I was talking about the lack of, of, you know, resources that the department had with some of the tools that we had, some of the equipment that we had, and that it was gonna be one of my, um, you know, strongest passions was to get that stuff implemented, we have over the years, um, I can go back to when I started, we had equipment that was from the seventies and eighties, uh, we have updated tons of our equipment, um, and we've, we've been making strides, you know, throughout the years to get those, to get that equipment where it needs to be, um, some of it's been grant funded, some of it we've squeezed in where we could, um, in the vehicle purchase plan, we, we did squeeze in the, uh, two new radios for those trucks and a portable radio for the officers, that was a Band-Aid to get us through because that would at least get us, uh, one radio to use between all of us, but that was never set to be the long-term plan, that was the money that we had available to work with and the, you know, what everything was gonna be agreed upon, now, um, I could, I know there's some different opinions on what that salary debate was over from.
I wasn't concerned with salaries.
I, I just, I'm trying to explain it because I think it, it matters to the question of why wasn't it brought up when there was a big increase in funding back then, um, the salaries were a way for us to be more consistent with departments around us, and if we're gonna keep officers here a long time, you could ask any steward officer, has ever worked here, I can guarantee they would say, the two things that are important to them are, they're getting paid fairly, they're not expecting to be, to be rich, they're, they're expecting to be paid what other people in other departments of similar size get paid, and that they have decent equipment, those are the two things that'll keep cops coming back to work, if you lack those things, there's no point in being a cop in that place, because if you can't be safe, if you can't have the equipment to do our daily, you know, tasks, and you're not getting paid fairly, then it's extremely hard to keep officers here and keep them wanting to be here, and I know, I've said this for years with different council members, um, I know we're not gonna be able to compete with some of the cities that we're close to, but my goal as the chief, as I think it should be, is to get my equipment and my salaries as high as I possibly can with your guys' assistance, to keep officers here as long as they can, um, so I think I've, I've tried to do that, um, these radios are things that we've had talks about in the past, I've asked for, for increases to, or to other solutions to figure out a way to get these radios, so it's not like I just decided, um, two weeks ago to ask for these.
Right, no, I was just, I don't know why we didn't consider this war when we were looking at the bigger option there.
And I recall during those conversations, we did bring up some of those concerns that equipment was, I remember saying very vividly to the council, you know, the salary is one portion of this, there are still equipment needs that we're gonna need to address if we're gonna keep officers here and we're gonna keep them happy, and so we were trying to, you know, kinda chip away at the things that were most important and, and work our way up to that system, which I, which we're still trying to do, and I just see, I understand that, you know, there may have been some confusion on what this money could be spent on when it first came in, but if you read that guide, it is very clear that it could have been used for, um, some of the things that we're needing, and I've been asking for these things for years, that money came in, the guide would have been very easy to see, why was that not ever an option, why didn't we, why weren't we a part of that conversation to say, hey, you know, is there any of this money that you guys could use? Because the other portion of this too falls back on COVID, you know, that's what this money really is designed for, it's, it's the fiscal relief to the COVID response, I have officers that are sharing and walkie-talkie, that they hold up to their mouth, so I go talking it all day, we try to sanitize it, put it in a charger, and whoever's on duty after me picks up that exact same radio, right now, we're down to one laptop in the cars, so the, the screen they're not touching all day, I have to then turn around and hand to the next officer, so this spend, this federal money was given to the city to reduce those types of situations, to give us money to go towards the response to COVID, and if that's not a, a valid reason to spend a portion, I'm not even asking for a, a third of this money, I'm just asking for a portion of it to be used to update our equipment, radio communications, and our, our technology for five to ten years, this could be something we don't have to worry about for ten years.
Is there something wrong with the laptop that's been sitting here at City Hall waiting for you to pick up?
It's, it's, nothing wrong with it, it's just not something that we can utilize with our system, so the current, and we could.
It can't hold digital, I mean, you can't download stuff on it and do reports and hold body camera stuff.
Like Microsoft Word and things like that, I'm sure, but, um, so the computers that we use in our cars, they obviously have to be, they're, they're set to sit in a certain dock, um, without it being in that dock, things just float in there to go wherever.
What about your, over here at the station, I, I read in your letter that you wanted new, or that you were looking to upgrade your computers?
So, the need is, we, we need new computers, so what I'm trying to do with this laptop, I'm trying to meet in the middle and find the, the cheapest way to do this that makes sense, if we issue every officer a laptop out of this program, that's a rugged laptop that he can carry out to the car, plug into the dock, he can also bring it into the office that has a, a system built into it, um, the, it's kinda hard to explain, but the handle folds a certain way that you can flip over, set it on a desk, but it's a desktop computer, so it, it solves our need for desktop computers and it solves our need for laptop computers all in one, when I, when I initially went through this proposal, um, that was one of the things that I had listed out and gotten quotes on, but I feel like if I'm gonna be using some of this money that other departments may need, um, it wouldn't not be better to try to figure out ways that we could do this as efficiently as possible, so that was one of the options, um, you know, so it's, it's, I know for people that don't do our, our job, technology seems like it's technology, computers are computer, laptops are laptop, but the laptops that we use are specifically designed to do the stuff that we do, and a regular laptop would last a month in one of our vehicles, the, the extreme changes from cold to hot, you're going from a vehicle that may be, you know, negative, um, whatever temperature to, uh, a heater blasting an hour later, pumping air into it, it's gonna start to warp things, move things, the screens aren't designed to withstand the stuff that we do, we carry these computers into calls with us, we carry them into the jail with us, we carry them into the office with us, they get dropped, they get banged, they get, uh, you know, it happens, so these rugged computers are designed to, uh, up to military specs, it's what any police department around us uses, and actually, the ones that I got quotes on are twenty-five percent less than like Toughbooks, which is what most departments use, um, but they're pricier.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Um, I appreciate your candor, you know, and, you know, we've had our back and force and stuff, you know, and we each considered each other a straight shooter as you put it at one time, um, my concern, you know, I know, I know we talked about salaries and like, why we didn't do this, you know, and, and when we did, did do the increase in, in the salaries, uh, we were told, you know, that you can run the department based on, on these numbers, okay, and I think there was some, some talk about billing grants and some fundraising at that time, uh, there was a, you can't, I can't say promise, but you had indicated you can generate internally some revenue about approximately thirty thousand a year, and, you know, just looking back in twenty nineteen, it was about forty-five hundred, so, you know, we're pretty short on that, um, twenty twenty was about twenty-four hundred, uh, twenty twenty-one was about seven thousand, and seven months into twenty twenty-two, it's seventeen hundred.
Sure.
Um, now I know there's things that come up that, that can hamper that, but that seems, that's a lot of money, uh, there's, there's a big difference from thirty thousand down to even seven thousand on that, uh, and, and I don't wanna say, you know, we, we use fines for a revenue generator, that's just what happens.
Sure.
Uh, and you can't guarantee that, but that's a big difference.
So, um, I guess to answer that, first of all, I, in Iowa, I am not allowed to give a quote into my officers, I don't have the right to say, hey, officer one, you have to write X amount of tickets.
Right.
Or receive, make X amount of money, um, per year, so it's very dependent on those officers that are working, that's something I don't have control over, um, I don't think anyone does, the other side to that, those years that you mentioned, um, I think people look at the numbers and they go, oh, they had four officers or they had three officers, that's not even close to the case, we had, I mean, there was a period in those, in those timelines, or at least shortly before, where I was literally the only officer in this town for two months, so when I'm answering, uh, you know, like I, I gave you guys the statistics for my, our monthly calls, a hundred and sixty calls last month, when I'm going myself to that type of, of call volume, I don't have the time to pull the cars over, it's that simple, when there's two officers working, even then, when we're working late shift, uh, late hours, we're putting in eighteen, twenty, thirty hour shifts, um, we can't be proactive, it's impossible, it is absolutely impossible, so the only way that we can get to those numbers, and we, we had numbers higher than those numbers you read off, when we were truly four full-time officers back in the Mike Allgreen, Will Weedenmeyer, Ryan Harding, um, that was the last time that we were ever. That was the last time that we were ever consistently four, long-term. They were here for a long period of time. They didn't cycle through and leave within six months. And we did have those numbers. Now that is what we're trying to build.
Sure.
And I think we've got those people here now. But never once in my proposal did I promise that those numbers would be met. I said, this was our goal. This is what we'll try to work towards. And I think with the officers we have, you'll see that, maybe even more than that. Because there are some really proactive, great officers working for us now. Now, the problem is, when I have them going on calls without the proper equipment that they need, those officers are not going to stay here. And I can guarantee you that because I've been the chief here for over 10 years. And I know what the chief complaints are in officers. And they're going to say, if I don't feel safe and I don't have the proper equipment to do my job, I don't want to work here anymore.
And, and not to go into like a four-hour meeting here, I'm just, you know, my concern is, you know, is when we have a department head come up and say, hey, we're going to strive for this. And then we're significantly under that is, was that an appropriate estimation or appropriate thing? You know, because you could come in and say, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get 100,000, you know, in this, you know, and then it's 7,000, you know?
Sure.
Why was that such a high number when you knew you only had two officers, you know? I, I would have been happy if you said, you know, we're looking at, you know, you know, possibly 10,000 as an estimate. If you come in at seven, that's a lot better than saying, well, we're looking, we're going to hopefully get 30,000. Now we come in at 7,000. You know, because now you're looking at the realistic thing that only got one person or two people. And, but we're taking your word and saying, 30,000 for two people, okay, you know, let's try to get. Now, I know you can't promise that. I, I get that, you know? Maybe a better estimation on that, you know? Also, these things have been going on for years, you said. You've needed this update for, for stuff. I know we talked, you know, we have these grants. The one in my home backyard, I think Big Dare County has a foundation grant.
We received that. We did receive that. They did.
Did, did you guys receive that? Okay, okay, okay. So, and I'm looking at, I would love for us as a city to not have to, you know, look at fundraising for any department, you know? I would, I would love that we would have the tax base that we could increase that a certain amount and be able to fund everything. That's not the reality, you know? I don't want to, I mean, we could raise taxes, $30 per thousand, get everybody everything that they wanted and possibly more. We could do that. But then we're going to kill the growth in Stuart. Nobody's going to move here and you're going to have people moving out. So you're not going to get ahead of anything. So, and I'm not a defund. I don't want to take money away from. I don't believe in.
Sure.
I believe in looking at what our wants are and what our needs are, you know? And you're saying this, this is an absolute need. And I believe you because we have radios at the fire department that we can't talk 15 feet from each other sometimes, you know? And then I see, and I'm not bad. I see a fundraiser and we get a dog. Okay?
Sure.
But yet we need communications for our officers to feel safe. The dog is not a bad thing, but is the timing for that the right thing? Why did we ask for a dog instead of, hey, we need communications? We need in-house cameras. This is going to, this is going to save us, you know, here and help us right now be able to communicate. There was a fundraiser just held for community outreach programs. Great idea. I believe in it. But if we have this ultimate need for safety, is this the best time to be doing fundraiser for, you know, badges and badges or whatever? I'm not against that. I'm just saying, where's the priority to say, any money we get in needs to go to this? I agree that this money is for those things. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying we should, we shouldn't do this. I'm just saying, how come, for me personally, I won't say anybody else, I'll speak for me. Where was the need when we looked at these other, other things that you, you have gotten for that?
Sure. And I could, I mean, if, if you would like me to respond, I'd love to.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, that's.
So my philosophy, and, and I think that it, it boils down to what's right and wrong and what taxes are designed to go for. I think, I'm a taxpayer of, of this city as well. And so I have, you know, wishes that I wish my taxes would go towards. I would never expect, if I lived in a town, for my police department to have to apply for a grant to get badges. I would never expect my police department to have to apply to a grant to get guns. I would never expect my police department to have to apply for grants to get radios. Especially when in Iowa, it's a requirement under law that the city provide law enforcement coverage to their citizens. So I wouldn't apply for the Guthrie County Foundation Grant to say, hey, guys, we're kind of low on our fuel budget. I need fuel to put into my cars so that my officers can patrol. There's money that's come in that may be able to be used for this, but I'm being asked to apply for grants instead. I don't think that's ethical. I don't agree with it one bit. And I'll, I think that radios are bear, they're a necessity to what we do. They are something that the city should provide us regardless of cost. Because it's something that we have to rely on for our jobs. I will give you, I know I gave you some examples in that proposal, but I want to read this to you today because I think this is important. And it's a good example. This is something that literally happened a couple of hours ago. This is a law from our sheriff's office. One of our steward officers, don't have radio, have male subject with knife holding a one-year-old hostage. Later on, referring to me, they tried to call me on the phone. I didn't answer because I was in the middle of that situation. Then they later said, we're good. We just don't have radios. Everything's tense here. Now, I know that people don't always see the, the bad part of what we do, the, the people that we deal with, the calls we deal with. But these happen more often than not. This week alone, we've had three different incidents, not including today, where multiple steward officers were out at the same time. Didn't have ways to communicate. Two of those were standoffs with a possibly violent person. And we're on opposite sides of the house without any way to communicate with each other. This is beyond a, why can't we just go apply for a grant? This is something that the city should provide to us, just like they would provide gloves to an electrician working on electrical lines. The other stuff, I couldn't agree with you more. The, the in-car cameras, the body cameras, there's no law saying we have to have these. So when it comes time to fund them, I have no problem looking for grants. Because I think that's what, especially community grants or community foundation grants, I think that's what they're designed for. They're designed for K-9 programs. They're designed for after-school projects. They're designed for the things that the community would like to see us provide in excess of our normal jobs or our normal law enforcement services. But to ask a community foundation to take money away from good projects throughout the entire county just to give us something that we should have had the day that they came out with that system, I don't agree with that. I just don't. And we may disagree, and that's perfectly acceptable. But that's one of the reasons that I would never, I think that, that those particular items shouldn't be addressed in that way. To go back to the, real quick, to go back to the, the 30,000 number. Again, in my proposal, every once in a while, I'm misleading about it. I didn't say this is what we're going to make in the next month. I didn't say, this is what we're going to make while we're building towards this project. I said that when we had four full-time certified officers, these were numbers that we could expect to see after that point. We just hit four full-time certified officers in December. That's two months ago. So to expect my department to have generated that kind of revenue in two months of operating at full staff, it's impossible.
I never said that. I said, over those years, that 30,000 is, we can expect that, you know? And I said, and you heard me, I didn't say you promised it. I said, you gave us this number that gave, where, you know, we kind of expect this. Knowing that you didn't have that help, if you had two officers, I don't know why you'd say we need, we're, we're expecting 30,000 to work towards that. That's, that's what I'm looking at.
I'd say we might be seeing that, maybe there's some confusion in how I'm saying it. What my proposal said back then was when we get to four full-time officers, we weren't at four full-time officers. So I wasn't proposing that you should see those numbers with two officers. I said, you should see those numbers when we get to four full-time officers, which if you go back further in the records, you see numbers higher than that. So it wasn't that I was shooting for the stars and picking a number out of, out of nowhere. It was that that's a reasonable number for us to reach with for fully certified, lowers, our schedules are shorter. We're not working as many overhours. We're all, you know, not tired and we can be proactive. So, and I still think you'll see those numbers as you see these four officers work together as a team. But like I said, my fear, and another thing to kind of talk about K-9 program and those things, I've seen 10 to 12 years of experience watching officers come through the store, use this as a bridge to say, who's the next guy that's going to pay me more to do my job? I'm going to go. Right? And so one of the ways that I've been able to try to keep people is allowing them to pursue the things in this line of work that they enjoy doing. So I'm not the kind of boss that says, you know, you can't do that stuff because, you know, we don't have the money for it. If one of my officers comes to me and says, I would really like to work with kids at the school. Great. Let's work on a plan. Let's figure out a way that we can fund it. Let's figure out a way that we can host the classes to make this possible. And let's give you a reason to be happy working here. Because we don't have the equipment to keep you happy. And the salaries are very quickly going right back down in comparison. So if I can give those officers a way to be happy here and enjoy their job, they're better officers. Not only do they care about this community more, but they stick around longer because they have something that motivates them to go out and do that work. That's the same reason with the K-9 program. When we didn't all sit down as a department and say, man, we need radios, but let's go get a K-9. I had an officer approach me and said, I would love to be a K-9 officer. It's one of the goals I've always had as an officer. And I said, awesome. Let's sit down. Let's figure out, I know the city isn't going to, isn't going to fund it. So we need to find a way to, to fund for this, to go out and get some money. And that's what we did. And now that officer has a better chance of staying here for four years.
And that's what we did over at the fire department, you know, when we decided that we want to go for Class A's.
Sure.
We said, we have to find a way to fund it because we're not going to get money from the city. We had a wants and needs. That was a want. So we had to meet our needs, you know, and I understand, yeah.
Can we just make short of this?
Well, I would like to finish my thought, you know, I, I didn't interrupt you when you were asking questions. I'm just saying, is that we, we had a one-time windfall of a lot of money. If that COVID money wasn't here, what would we be doing? What would we be doing?
I'd be asking you guys, since you've been on the council a lot enough, what have you been doing?
Yep. So long and short of this is if we could just continue. Is it my understanding that if he applies for the grant, we can still expend the money and they will go back and reimburse? So if he orders his radios now.
Yes.
With, and we say, can you please apply for the grant? But we're going to go ahead and pay for the full amount right now.
We shouldn't have to do that.
No, we shouldn't, but we've got to look at ways.
The city's got plenty of money. They got this stimulus package. We should have been budgeting for this years ago and the past council has failed. And they need their stuff, period. I'm looking for a solution.
Okay, so how are you going to budget for it? How would you, if this money wasn't here, what are you going to do?
Oh, I, I don't know, Mike. And that's what we're going to do.
So, Mike.
Well, no. What we should have been doing was budgeting in the past years when our chief overhaul was asking for this stuff.
And, and I agree. My, my thing is, I, I want them to get their equipment, is that when you live in a small town, you're going to run out of.
You realize taxpayers.
You're going to live, you're going to, no, I didn't interrupt.
I don't care, Mike.
I did interrupt. And I'm not going to sit here and let you interrupt.
You've talked for the last half hour, Mike.
I was saying that too, and you never interrupted her.
Oh, can I finish my motion?
Jesus. So my thing is, is that if there was this need, this need, and, and you said it was a need for years, how come these other options weren't looked at? You know, what I'm hearing from our chief is that it doesn't matter. The city should just give us what we want, when we want.
I don't think that's what I said at all.
You did say that, but that's what I'm hearing. You said whatever it stands.
I said I would, I would expect the city to provide the necessary equipment for me to do my job. If I get a call right now, if dispatch is trying to call me, they have no way to call me. There's four officers sitting in this room right now. You look at any of their uniforms, there's one radio, one.
I agree. But we would also expect our department head to seek out all types of funding. Whatever it may be.
It's Christine's turn.
You know, a grant, a fundraiser, whatever, because you've done fundraisers. That's all I'm saying is that.
Dick, can you go over this?
We should have seeked out all types. You're not going to silence me.
Okay, but I'm trying to make a motion here that I think is going to make everybody happy. I'm making a motion, wrapping this up.
What I'm, what I'm doing is, I can finish.
Okay. You told me last meeting, you had money available for those radios.
And I've been saying that all along. Nothing changed.
If I finish, I'm going to allow that to happen.
This is ridiculous that these officers are in dire need of radios for what happened today and the past. We need the radios now. Get the grant, maybe the radios need to be ordered.
And that's what she's trying to make a motion.
Okay, why don't I make the motion?
Okay, so my motion is that we approve the purchase of these radios. So that way we can get it started now. Because I get that it's a safety concern. Like that's, it's never been an issue for me to order these radios. Like that's never been in question. So I would like to give them the allowance to do this. But in the same token, I would like to finish the grant and just let it go. And if we get reimbursed for half of it, then we do. And if we don't, we don't. But we need to allow them to get the radios. I also would like to see the security system dealt with. And then we can address and look at these other wants in the months coming. But at least tonight, we can get these radios ordered and we can get the security system.
Which radio, which radio proposal?
Whatever he needs. He needs radios.
Could I say something real quick before that goes through? What I said in, in option B would be applying for the grant for the in-car cameras, for the, the body cameras and for the security cameras of the, the office. None of those are required by law. None of those are, are things that we can't operate without. We've operated without body care, without in-car cameras in the past. As an ideal, no, but we've done it. Because we've had to go through all these different alternative sources to raise money. We have used grant money in the past to get these items. We've also used hand-me-downs from other departments. We have done everything in our power to get some of these things working. What I can't do, what our officers can't do, is do their job without radios and without those computers. Those computers, not only do we type on, not only do we do that stuff, but these citations have to have a computer to do them. They GPS our location, our dispatch talks to us with them. They track our call logs currently. So without those computers, to give you an example, today, I had four officers on two different calls. Because the, the, the incident that I read the log, that, that wasn't how this day started. We started, we started seeking out a guy with a class of any felony arrest warrant, and that's who we were looking for. I had four officers out on computers. That means dispatch only sees one of us. They only see one of our locations. So those two items, I think, are absolute necessities. I would be more than glad to work with anybody and everybody on alternative funding to get the rest of that stuff accomplished.
So you're asking for option B, is that right? Four ready Motorola portable radios, one P25 ready Motorola radio and four G-TAC laptop computers?
Ah, to be spent out of the, the local fiscal recovery funds that we have already received.
That's what you're asking for. That's, and that's what you would be happy with right now.
That is what we absolutely need.
That's what you're asking for.
If, if we can find alternative solutions to that other stuff, I'd be more than happy to work with it. But those things are things we can, we can live without. I don't think the county attorneys will be happy. Because it's used for multiple reasons, evidence collection, all sorts of stuff. But the radios and the computers, that is our lifeline to dispatch to other officers. And that's what I would ask you guys to consider. We'll look at grants for the other stuff. I said, I've already got this grant filled out. I have no problem completing it. But when I come back with this grant, it's only 50% matching grams. So when I ask the council and say, they're only going to fund half of this, I have to know that you guys are going to say yes. If not, I'm wasting my time on this.
And so what I'm saying is, I'm not saying that we're not going to fund all of it like Cory wants. I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm saying tonight, we need to get them the radios, like tomorrow, we need to get them ordered.
And if we use this, this COVID relief money, it's, it's not, it's not going to raise the taxes. It's money we've already received from the federal government for this purpose. One of their included examples in the guide is emergency radio systems.
And, and my, my thing is not to not use it. My thing is like, like I said, if this was an emergency, why would we be looking at these funding options prior to today? We have the money. We, we can use it. We can use it. But we also have these other departments, you know? So they're not here at the table to say, hey, I. So they're not here at the table to say, hey, I need this money.
That's what I want.
You know, also, so how, you know, if we, if we were to fund all of this, which was how much?
Mike, if it were up to me, I would have wished the city took that two fifty, got fire rescue and police, emergency radios.
My motion.
I didn't even know this money could come in.
To reiterate my motion that's on the table, Dick, is to go ahead and approve the purchase of the radios and the security system tonight. And then continue working with Chief Reha on how we can get the rest. At least till next month, so we can process this.
Do you wanna use that?
I'd like it to finish out using the, I mean, finish the grant, and if we get it, we get it, we don't, we don't.
Hey Christine, just, just, and, and I'm not against your motion, but he said radios and laptops right now.
No, she's saying the radios.
And I'm saying for tonight, radios and the security camera system tonight.
I, I get that.
And we will work through the rest in the next month, and we can talk about this next month.
I get it, but if we have, if we're getting what he absolutely says is his lifeline. This is what I'm saying is, we have somebody here saying, this is my lifeline. This was my point I was trying to make, he's been saying this for years. And they've had some fundraisers, and, and I get it, you want to keep them happy, um, I hope you understand what I'm saying. It's like, huh, they've had spaghetti fun? If, if that was the lifeline, why didn't they spend it on their lifeline?
Because when a bad person comes to your door, you're gonna want him there.
God, you're not listening. Why don't we give him what he wants, he needs the radios and he needs the laptops? Instead of spending it on a security camera at the office, he need, I'm trying to give him more than what you're giving him. I'm trying to give him the laptops and the radios.
Just to make it easy. Okay.
It seems silly to do that.
They, stay with me. You own the radios at the cost of twenty-five thousand nine hundred ten dollar and twenty cent. Okay? And you own the mobile data terminals at the twenty-three thousand seven hundred six dollar forty-six cent?
Yes.
That is that what you're saying the top priority?
Those to me are the top priority, it's also, and hear me out, the grant, if we use that to try to recover some of those two items using this grant, we won't have that grant to use towards these other items.
I don't care if you use it for that or you use it towards the other items, if we just pay for those and we just apply for other stuff.
So with option B, what I was trying to do was allow us to apply for the grant for those other things, because then we could put it towards that. If we don't use the, if we use the grant on radios and computers, then we're not gonna have any assistance on those other items unless it all directly comes out of.
Right.
That's what Mike's trying to explain.
I think I'm reading everybody's mind, but it's getting late and everybody's.
I hear you.
I, I don't, I don't want us in the same position where, where we're not giving what he wants on this and then using that grant for these other things that he says is.
There with me, okay.
Not really a priority, it's a priority, but he can deal with that later.
I see your point, okay, let me just communicate with them and try to get to the point that we're all gonna be happy about. Okay, to, Dave, to get everybody happy, to get you happy, I think the solution here is to get you what you're asking for right now. You know, that he's saying he can, he can do that, which is that twenty-five thousand nine hundred ten twenty-three seven oh six, okay? And then I see the council who would like you to apply for that grant that was uh Gethsean County. And I think you already have ready to apply. So go ahead and do that if you don't mind. And then my proposal is, if you'd like to get that twenty-five thousand twenty-three seven, that we can use that American Rescue money that we have.
That is my thing.
Yes.
I have somebody here, if you were the fire chief and you said, I needed this and this, and we wanted to approve this and security cameras, I would be going, I would be losing my mind, I'd be like, get the radios, get the laptops, that's what you need. Use that grant for these other things down below, because those can wait for.
Those cameras need fixed.
Right?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying they're, they're not essential, but they can.
But they can wait for that grant, because you're telling me this is my lifeline.
You can order this stuff and still apply for the grant, and the grant can still come back and you can still apply it for what you've already spent. So you can spend fifty thousand a night and you can apply for a grant and say, we're applying for a grant for fifty, the city is willing to pay twenty-five. We can spend the money now and they will still come back and reimburse you for the twenty-five.
I, I'd have to check their, their guidelines if it works that way, but if it does.
I have been told that that's how it works, you have up to three months.
My only concern, like I said, like I mentioned earlier, was just the fact that we would then have used that resource and we would not be able to apply to that grant to these other things.
Is it an early grant?
It is an early grant.
Right, and if you, if you get it, if you may not get it, it's most likely with anything.
And there's no guarantees on the total amount awarded, uh Susan told me tonight, you know, we could ask for the, the half of this plan, we might not get it.
Okay, so I'll just apply for it, you got it, you got it.
I'm willing to expend the money and take the risk of applying for the grant for this purpose.
So I just need to know though, because when I apply for this grant, it has to be a certain amount. So I need to know that I'm applying it to the two top categories, or am I applying it to the bottom two categories? Because that changes the about, the amount that we're applying for.
The top two.
The top category would be, I don't know, videos.
You want to apply it for both?
No, what?
I, I thought you were just applying for the radios, so it would just be the twenty-five for the grant, and then we would, we would pay for the laptops ourselves, not through the grant.
I don't mind.
That was for a point of order, did someone make a motion? I did, it was now reviewing it, you can't divert, you have to act on the motion. I mean, you're completely off course, sorry.
We're trying to kind of just get it, get to the bottom, I think we ought to.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me just ask a simple question, and do you mind having the police use some of that American Rescue?
It's not your money, somewhere else, right?
No. Oh, it's the amount to the sewer and water, that's what's initially. But nothing really has such tool to have his builder about him. If we get him the necessity and all this stuff throughout that grant, I think we can do that.
So we can, we can make the motion to do the top two.
Okay.
To the tune of whatever it is, I'm not a number person.
Yes.
And use, and get him those items.
Yes.
And apply for the grant, and if the grant comes through, then we can.
Yeah.
But if not, it doesn't matter because we're still giving him the money.
Yes. And I, please, apply for the grant, I'll, I'll help you out, just come tomorrow, we'll finish that grant with you, okay?
But we're at least giving him the equipment that he needs tonight, so he can at least order it.
Everybody's okay?
I'll second that.
What is it?
Motion, now, second.
We're gonna read the motion now. We're gonna allow the police to have the two top categories of the radios and the laptops. The top one is twenty-five thousand nine hundred ten dollar and twenty cent. The laptop is twenty-three thousand seven hundred six and forty-six cent. Using, utilizing that American Rescue grant that we have. That's the motion?
We got the grant in there.
And then apply for the Gethsean County grant.
If received.
If received, will be applied toward this.
And then we can use that money to get other things.
Yes. Yeah, I got your point.
So, so the, so the Gethsean County grant is to be used for other things, not to reimburse for the forty, fuck forty-three, right?
I second that.
It will, it will, we must go talk something else, yes, so, we're good, we're good. Moved and seconded, moved by its little seconded by.
So, how do you vote? Correctly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Rinsland?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes.
One more.
Yes.
Can you please get somebody out here to look at those cameras? Over here, if they're not working, city hall is working, but these aren't working, can we get someone to look at them and see why they're not working? Will you just look into it?
And we have, we're on the bubble forum now, and we have the.
I can, my name is Angie Katz, I've been watching from home, thank you for the YouTube, I can get the baby in bed and do it all. And I just have to say that, are we, I have a police chief, I don't know if you have a background in finance or budgeting or whatever. You hired him to be a police chief, not to be able to project how many tickets and income you can have from him. It's your job to provide safety for every employee that asks for, that works for you. It's your basic job. And for him to stand up here and be questioned on a sun spaghetti supper for a kids program or, and I know you weren't all questioning him. I was moved to get off my couch and come up because it's not okay. Your job is to provide safety for your employees and their work, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And.
You can go first, Matt, I'm, I'd be a minute.
All right, all right, well, I do have something to go with, all right? Um, I'm sorry it's late.
All right, uh, I just wanted to add though that uh back in January, I just gotta go with the southern guy here on the report. I toured the wastewater sewer treatment plant, and this is just an FYI, because there's gonna be some issues coming up, guys, right? Jim said he believes from memory that the sewer plant that was updated in two thousand nine had a projected life expectancy at about twenty-five years. And the population to be at that twenty-five year mark, to be at about twenty-five hundred citizens. With the current population of seventeen eighty-two citizens, we only need seven hundred more residents to reach that twenty-five hundred citizen threshold. Jim also explained that the sewer lines in the city are clay tile, most of the sewer lines are clay tile, with multiple connection joints which allow groundwater to leak into the sewer lines. Essentially, when this area has a heavy rainstorm, uh, the sewer lines act in the same way as the drain pile lines that many farmers use to drain excess water from their fields. Causing the wastewater treatment facility to take in more water than the system and the facility can handle for treatment. Jim also explained that more water than, or I'm sorry, Jim also explained that the city had not raised sewer rates since two thousand nine. And the current sewer rate charges do not accommodate for infrastructure to address sewer line deficiencies, nor the inevitable expenses to update the facility to co- to coincide with the city's growth. Just an FYI. Uh, also on another subject, I'm gonna apologize to Mr. Guthrie. Twelve years ago, when I first got on the city council, one of my things that I ran for was to, my, when I bought the town. I was a strong person behind the uh city code. So I apologize, it's my fault. That code was never intended to harass people because of dirty siding or discolored planters. It was for safety and health. I don't know, I'm sure it has not been a city council that's changed it, but something's happened. And it has gotten where it was never intended to be. So, I would ask you to review that, it was never intended for dirty siding. Safety and health was the only reason. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, I just real quick one to add. In the couple of years that I've been here today, it's been one of the most stressful days in this job that I've had. The one thing I can say is I'm glad that we have a amazing team. Um, they all did great work and I know that at the end of the day, any one of them would have my back and I'd have theirs. So, I just wanna throw this out there, I don't need any answers. But I'd like for all of you to think of one thing, when Chief Reha's up here describing things that are not only wants, but their absolute needs and necessity are lifeline, when we're out there doing stuff like what was going on today. I wish I could say that stuff like what happened today is very few and far between, but it's not. It is not, it, anybody who's been around this town, any bit, they don't even have to be a Stewart resident, people all around here. Stewart has stuff like this going all the time. I'd like you all to think about the ones you care about the most, and if they were in this position, out doing what we're doing. I'm not saying that as in, you know, oh praise us, praise us, that's not what I'm asking for, I just want you to think about that. Because when, when we need to call for help and we can't, and one of us gets hurt, I can guarantee you that a few of my family members, actually it is my family members, that are out there calling for help on their phone as they're chasing somebody down, who's wielding a knife and holding a one-year-old. It is that type of stuff that absolutely drives me crazy, because my family is out there putting their lives on the line and we're gonna come up here and argue, I get it that these numbers aren't small numbers. But think about those numbers, we're talking forty thousand dollars, or we'll just say just, just the radios, twenty-three thousand dollars. I want you all to think about, is the ones you love the most, is their life worth twenty-three thousand dollars? Because I'd be willing to bet, if you truly care about them, it'd be worth a million times more than that. So why do you expect us and the ones that we care about and the ones that show up to help us when we have absolutely everything go wrong and our lives in danger? Why is it expected of us to settle for any less than what we're absolutely needing? I just wanna throw that out there.
Thanks, Daniel.
I'll start out with, I love my job. A lot of my family's here, my husband's here, but those guys are my family. And even yesterday, I can go back a week, and I'm looking at my family, and there maybe, maybe Officer Irving was a field away from me yesterday. He doesn't have a radio on his Tahoe, he doesn't have a portable on, I'm watching his back, but I cannot talk to him. Okay, I was the one running through buildings today at the yellows, at the South Summit Apartments. You wanna watch my body cam later, happy to play it. I am coming in a little hot, because I am running through this saying, there's a guy with a knife, there's a one-year-old, and I am trying to get my phone out as I'm running to say, I need someone else. Because this is not safe anymore, this is ridiculous. Yes, you did this past this, but the fact that my chief, who I'm coming up on five years this summer of saying, I wanna work for a sheer police department. And I have been right behind him every step for five years. And I have supported him every day. But the fact that he has to come up here and explain to you why we need a radio, and there may be philosophical and maybe ethical dilemmas or discussions on grants and their usage, I can, I can talk to you all day. I firmly stand with him on, community grants are for, you know, wants, a radio is a need. Would I go ask the grant and say, hey, can you guys pay for my oil change because we don't have the budget? Hey, we don't have the gas money, no. I think grants are, are for those projects that add to a program, that add to those basic needs. And just like our K nine, K nine will be utilized greatly in our community. There's a reason I spend my days off working at the school, there are reasons I kind of voluntold them all to come home to me with that spaghetti dinner. There are those programs enhance our community, enhance our department, but if I can't talk to them, while I'm looking for a guy and a knife and a baby, and I'm, I'm by myself at that point. Thank goodness I had a state trooper with me. And he has no idea what's going on unless I get a radio call and we're relaying radios. A week ago, a couple of weeks ago, I went to go do a removal at DHS for a one-year-old. Guess what, I've got, got another officer, he's holding back a hostile family, they're, they're not happy, they're not always happy with us. I walk, I take the baby, I go outside, come face to face with a family member. What's easier, I've got a baby in my hand, hey, fourteen, I need you outside, or let me get my phone out, let me call. You guys have to understand what our job is, maybe, I guess you don't have to understand, but if you could appreciate, there is no Mayberry, I follow Paige and I always hear that Mayberry is a myth. The things that happened in Stewart, those things don't, aren't unique today, it's happened a lot in the last five years. I've had standoffs with shotguns, no radio, I let Guthrie go over because he had a radio system. Today, we have one portable, it's on another officer, Guthrie, deputy goes, hey fourteen, you need to answer the radio, they're calling you, he has to walk over to another officer and go and mic up on it. The fact that we have to come here and tell you those basic needs are necessity, that's why officers leave the departments. Because I, 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 I contract myself. Why do I stay, there are reasons I stay, and it's for those three, it's for the community, can I go somewhere and make more money? Absolutely. I'm a minority even in this agency or in, in the state Iowa, seventy percent of officers are female. So, you know, what's the point of that, it's, it's that I could go, all of us, these officers are in the green right now. One officer's that love the community, I love this community. Why do I work most of my days off? Because I see the benefits and the progress and the possibilities. But when you, we don't have basic means, even the computers, I, I think it's hard to understand what our computers do, that we're using them. I, I think it's hard to understand what our computers do without you using them. But when my GPS says I'm in the jail, but it says I'm in a field by Dexter, that's great if I hit my emergency button. Today, I'm not, is, there's four of us in uniform, right? How many are on shift? How many are actually on shift right now? One. So yeah, Shane is on right now. That means the other three of us, we're out. You know why? Because they called and said, can you come help? Yes, I can. Why was I late to meeting? Because I was over there filing charges on our one pilot that I had to wait for to get back from the scene. And yes, I know it's late and stuff. I haven't seen my kids either, and I, I've seen them since this morning. It's Monday, am. But I do those things because they need me, and I, I like to think the community needs it too. So there's my impassioned speech of, these are not things that we just think would be fun and nice and shiny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may not care for our officers, but I hope you care for the community. Because there was another morning, she had to go on a possible domestic, but she had to spend three minutes coming to the station to get a radio and a tablet. So the GPS knew where she was at. As my wife, I wonder, I want county to know where she's at. I mean, the possible domestic, three minutes is a long time.
Thank you. Okay, any other?
Yeah, I, I got a comment here.
Okay, we have John Goobler on someone I need to call anyway.
Cory, you're exactly right. I've sat here for years, even when I was in the insurance business and coming to council meetings. And I watched this count, these councils over the past years. And this gentleman back here would come up and talk about things like this. They would come up with some cockamamie scheme for him to go out and try to make work. And it never did, am I right? And it never did. And they've been limping along all this time. And you have the responsibility to provide that, that equipment for them. It's not something, not something they're going to get out of their, their spaghetti dinner. You guys have the responsibility to provide them just like any of these departments. You spent a lot of time and a lot of years working on nothing but development. And operations went in the can. And now it's coming back to your roost and you've got to take care of it.
You're exactly right. And we're all taxpayers.
Right.
That's what pays for it, we're supposed to pay for it. We shouldn't have to reach out for grants and everything.
I don't expect them to use spaghetti dinners to pay for things. I don't know. The grant helps ease. If we can get it, we can get it. But I don't expect the grant to pay for everything. And I don't expect them to write a hundred grand. I'm just, this is adding benefit.